Thank you, everybody. I'd like to call back this meeting Thursday, February 5th, Sacramento City Unified School Board Meeting and Workshop. So, we are now on item four. That's our callback. And our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by After School Enrichment and Safety Step Team, a dance group of 5th and 6th graders from Earl Warren Elementary School. They'll perform a short dance after leading us in the pledges of allegiance. So, thank you. One of you can come up to the microphone. Flag is over here. We do the pledge first, okay?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
That's supposed to be your feedback before you say that.
Oh, nice. Break my back. But then you'd have to run the meeting.
If I can get your attention, let me describe a little bit more about who this great team of students is. The Earl Warren Step Team Crew 02, I'm sorry, Crew 02, is made up of nine very skilled and highly energetic young people. The team is composed of both 5th and 6th grade students. Currently on the team roster are 5th graders Yesenia Garcia Pardo, Christopher Lee, Diana Rovolcava, Karina Tu, Team Captain Kanike Pinky Melendez, and 6th graders Angela Mendez, Karen Martinez, Jasmine Yang, and Tommy Lu. The team is coached by Guadalupe Rios from Lambda Theta Nu Sorority at Sac State University. Ms. Guadalupe leads practice every day, creating intricate steps for students to learn. When asked about their teacher, their students said words like role model and hero. When asked why they dance, team members said, quote, "Because it's fun. We get to make beats with our hands and feet. It brings people closer together. We get to be loud. And we get out of our drama from our days, and we feel free. We want to inspire other kids to get out of their shells and not be shy." Great, great comments. Crew 02 are great role models for their school and community. They have led canned food drives, led literacy and mentoring nights with 1st through 3rd grade students, taught dance to younger kids at the community events, and have continued to uplift the Earl Warren community with their artistry. The Board of Education is proud to recognize the Earl Warren Step Team Crew 02 as our stellar students. And if you don't mind coming up to the podium and if you would like to share a few words not only with the board but with the rest of the community. Captain. And the rest of the team members. Go ahead.
It's a great honor to be on the team, and I really appreciate us being here to perform in front of y'all. And I really thank y'all for us coming. And, yeah, it was really hard to be on the team, but I'm surprised we made it. We've been a long way, and to be here right now is just very exciting.
Wonderful. Anybody else? So, before you leave, we have certificates of appreciation for each of you.
I want to say thank you to Ms. Guadalupe for letting us do the step and teaching us because we wouldn't have done it without her. And she really teaches us, and we appreciate her because she teaches two teams, and she still has time for both of them and teaches us two unique ways.
And then we'll take a... Oh, he's gonna take a picture of us.
All of us.
Thank you, kids. Item five, announcements of actions taken in closed session.
Yes, Mr. President. Three items to report out of closed session. Two special education matters, OEH case number 2014-120126 and case 2014-110402, by a vote of six to nothing with Board Member Rodriguez absent. In another case, a perm case, SACE 272-E, an agreement was ratified unanimously by all Board Members by seven to zero vote involving SCTA and the district and related actions. That's the end of the announcements out of closed session, Mr. President.
Thank you. Item 6.0, agenda adoption. I have a motion from Vice President Pritchett. Second Vice President Hanson.
Wanted to poll something, remember? Yep. I'd like to poll item 9.1A, please. Couple items I wanted to discuss on there.
Okay.
But I'd move the rest to consent agenda. I'd second that.
You have public comment? Before we vote then on the agenda... Oh, sorry. All right. Well, he did on 9.1A, so.
Okay.
Go ahead, Jose.
Okay. Board President Wu, I recommend that bid number 407-2 be pulled from consent item 9.1A and that the Board rejects all bids on bid number 407-2 in order to rebid them. The Board may take action by approving my recommendation and its overall approval of the consent agenda 9.0.
Thank you. Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Member Royal. All those in favor of adopting the agenda as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We are at 7.0. Special presentation, facilities support services, annual donation to the Parker Family Resource Center. Ms. Allen.
Well, good evening, President Wu, members of the Board, and Superintendent Banda. I'm very pleased tonight to be able to make a presentation to a very worthy cause, and I'm not going to take the limelight, so, Mike, good job getting up here pretty quickly. I'm going to turn it over to Barry E. Packard, Director of Facilities Maintenance and Energy Resource Conservation.
Tonight, we have a very special presentation. We'd like, we have a donation, a check, that we would like to present to the Parker Family Resource Center. They've been doing fantastic work. These are donations that came from facility, that were collected through facilities maintenance, and we're going to present them with us, this wonderful check.
Board members, my name is Mike Breverly. I'm a power equipment machines for the district. June 2nd, I'll be with the district 27 years. I'm a product of the district, and I feel like we need to give back to the kids of the district. And so, what we've done for our winter luncheon is I front the money for the food, put a donation pot out there, anything beyond what I pay for the food goes to the Parker House. We've done this a couple of times already, right? We have a deal at the winter break, and then we have one at the end of the year to thank all the people in the maintenance department for the hard work that they put forward for the kids of this district. And this is our way of saying thank you to the kids. Because if it wasn't for the kids, you wouldn't be here, I wouldn't be here. Okay? Thank you.
And I hope you will express our greatest appreciation for the work that you all do down there, too. Thank you.
Good evening, and thanks for having us here. For those of you who might be new to the district, our district started a homeless program back in 1989. We were one of the few districts in the nation to start, and only the second district in the county at that time. And almost from the moment the doors opened, district staff and departments stepped forward to provide a lot of support services for our homeless students. And I have to say, we're one of the few districts in the county that really has a wonderful program and with a lot of support from staff. And almost from most of those years, the Facilities and Maintenance Department has been there. And I could not do my job, and the homeless students and their families could not get the services that they get, all those wonderful things, backpacks, supplies, many other resources. If it weren't for the district's staffs and departments and the Facilities and Maintenance Department, who every year, after year after year, is there for the program. So, truly, we're thankful, and I know that all the families that we serve and the students that we serve are very thankful, too.
Wonderful. Okay.
So, this most recent check is for $874, and we look forward to doing this again at the end of the year, so.
Okay. Item 8.0, public comment. And before we move on to public comment, I think Vice President Pritchett would like to read our...
That is not what I wanted to read. This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption with the exception of technical problems on Metro Cable 14, the government affairs channel on the Comcast and Shore West cable systems. Today's meeting will air Sunday, February 8th, and 9:00 a.m., Monday, February 9th at noon, and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Members of the audience wishing to address the Board should fill out a speaker identification form located in the back of the community room and give it to Chief Communications Officer of Mr. Ross prior to the conclusion of the item's presentation. Please speak into the microphone when addressing the Board and state your name for the record. Responses to questions by the public will be posted on the district's website prior to the next Board meeting. Please limit comments during public comment to items not listed on the agenda. If you are found to be commenting on an item that is on the agenda, you will be asked to defer your item until the item comes up on the agenda. Please turn off all cell phones or place them on the silent or vibrate mode.
Thank you, Vice President Pritchett. Public comment.
We have three comments on item 8.0 from Terrence Gladney, Nikki Malevsky, and Darlene Anderson.
Good evening, Terrence Gladney. For the past month, I... Well, the podium is really close tonight. I'm sorry. For the past month, I've come before you advocating for the JFK Track and Field Program. And in the course of doing so, I kind of reinvigorated my request to find out about the budget difference between the initial budget for the JFK Track Stadium and the final project, which was approved at $5.9 million. Over that time, a lot of it was just based on my recollection of events, but I was able to find documentation as well as the recordings from the April 18th, 2003 Board Meeting, in which I did approach you guys and thank you guys. You guys approved at that time four projects, two of which were the Rosemont Track as well as the JFK Stadium. And obviously, for you guys, a lot of this is rehashing, but this is just for public record. So, the section that's circled is basically identifying that the initial budget for that stadium at JFK was $1.8 million. The section circled on this page is showing that the initial budget for Rosemont's track was $1.1 million. Rosemont's track finished at about $1.897 million, and JFK finished at $5.9 million. If you guys look at the documents which I emailed you previously, the scope of work was pretty much the same, with the exception of JFK, they were adding a portable restroom for ADA accommodations. In the documentation that you guys were provided before the last Board Meeting via email from Kathy Allen with facilities, it identified the cost for that piece of the project at $997,000. That still leaves about $4 million difference, and I have yet to figure out where it is. Along with all of these events, you know, one of the key things I was advocating for was the fact that key components for the track team were not purchased, including starting blocks. You can't run sprint races without starting blocks. The good news is that Principal Switzer purchased those materials, but I confirmed with them they had to pull the money from the general fund at the school. So, that's $6,000 that should be going to our students and programs that was not accommodated in a $6 million bond project. I'm asking that our finance staff provide me with Saks reports, not only for JFK but also for Rosemont, and then also just for reference for Burbank's projects for comparison purposes, any tracking of Fund 21 and any other place that it might have been recorded. And I did want to thank Gerardo for being, you know, very supportive in any requests that we've given him in the past. He's been very helpful. But I don't know why, in the two weeks since I last stood before you, I haven't not gotten any feedback, whether on the website, because it was a public comment that I requested information, and also emailed you guys as well as, you know, staff directly. And at this time, I mean, I know Facilities is in the room, so if they have maybe an overview, but I would like answers. Because it's not right, I mean, Principal Switzer was basically given $100,000 over the project costs to accommodate for things that weren't accommodated in a $6 million budget. And I think that this really speaks to the need to have local oversight in the purchasing process and in the design process. You have multiple users of that facility who weren't involved until after the budget was laid out, and they're basically being told, well, we'll accommodate you to this extent. It's okay for Facilities go over budget about $4 or $5 million, but then you tell them they have a very finite amount of money to purchase equipment that we need that's going to be revenue into our district. So, if you guys can support me, or even ask Facilities to come up and explain where that funding is, because I don't appreciate being given a document that says that the original project was $4.7 million when it's in public record that it was $1.9. You know, and I spoke to you guys before, I didn't have the documentation, but I have it now, and I strongly did trust my judgment and my recollection of events, but it seems like somebody's trying to pull the wool over my eyes, and we still don't have answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gladney. This is like the fourth time that you've come and brought this to our attention. I'd like to formally ask staff that they please create a timeline of what has taken place, and then also work with Gerardo to do a budget to show us what has taken place at JFK as well. And then, I'd also like to ask that we set up a formal meeting. I'd like to sit in on that meeting with Mr. Gladney to go over what has taken place. That way, we can come down to the bottom of this.
Thank you. Ms. Malevsky?
Good evening. Nikki Malevsky, the proud president of the Sacramento City Teachers Association. I'm happy to stand before you tonight to recognize the leadership of Superintendent Banda in this school board for taking the significant, first, and we certainly expect not the last, step forward in building a much-needed, more constructive relationship between the teachers and the district. While details will be ironed out on Tuesday, and significant issues still remain, jointly we are taking a big initial step towards resolving the health plan issues that have rocked the district for the duration of the school year. We've also reached a snip-in agreement with the academic office regarding how common core allocated dollars will be spent for the remainder of this year and next. It's important to note, from our perspective, and we believe from the district would agree, that the discussions were very professional and constructive, and we hope will set a foundation for a vastly improved relationship. Two additional items I'd like to comment on tonight is we continue to work with Board Member Hanson and City Council Member Steve Hanson to reopen Washington School, and we urge this Board not to take actions that would impede that opportunity. And finally, we urge the district not to pass a resolution supporting the repeal of caps on reserves for school districts. We strongly supported the passage of that legislation in 2014, believing that children in schools today should not be short-changed to build financial reserves beyond what is prudent and necessary. To conclude, we hope that the events of this past week will prove to be a turning point in the relationship between teachers and the district, and will foster our ability to work together to create education that Sacramento students deserve. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Board President Banda, and honorable Board Members. Darlene Anderson here. I wanted to come because this is Black History Month, and I also wanted to come because it's so important that we start having a conversation in regards to the African-American student in this district. I've come here for more than 20 years, and me being one of the only parents, I served as my school site council chair, I served as the DAC chair, and I really don't believe that African-American parents understand what the purpose of a public education is. It should be so a child can go through the system for 12 years and come out and be employable. But this district is not being held accountable simply because California passed Prop 209, which said that you didn't have to publicly talk about any subgroup. So, African-American kids in this district are on the bottom. And when, this year, when I filed a complaint, and the complaint, and I appealed from the state, because of course the district closed it, but the state said I need to come back and work with my district on suspension expulsion. Now, how do you have a conversation with someone who refuses to have a conversation with you? Most people do not know how to save their children. These kids are being suspended or expelled. Someone called me the other night, kindergartner, been going through the expulsion process. Really? Really? I just have to say that the LCAP money and the LCF money is still going to the same person. All of the money going to this one person's salary. And for our student proficiency, my son made proficient in science and still got a D. And how do you talk to people who don't talk to you? It doesn't matter, because during the fugitive slave codes, black people didn't have a voice. And I have been coming here for years, unable to have a voice. Because when you closed my complaint, and after you closed my complaint, it says work with the district or continue to participate. But how do you participate with people who choose not to participate with you? This district has a responsibility for a basic education for all of its children, and it should be held accountable for the failure of African-American children. But when the black community doesn't really understand that they have a right to a civic, you know, right to a public education, and why would they accept an F? Why would you accept failure for your child? It's impossible to understand that in the year of 2015, this district has not had a public conversation with that black community. And I don't mean the black parallel schoolboy.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
I don't mean the two or three people. I mean, overall, the city of Sacramento, where you educate children on how to support those children and what could change. That I don't understand. Thank you.
Oh, Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you, President Wu. I'd like to thank Ms. Darlene Anderson for coming forward and rem... I'd like to thank Ms. Darlene Anderson for coming forward and reminding all of us that this month is Black History Month. And as a reminder to the board, I'd like to add an agenda item for next months, or not next months, but next meeting agenda, that we do a resolution in celebration of Black History Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Moving on to item 9.0, the consent agenda. Before we move on to the consent agenda, I wanted to make a correction to item 9.1F, which is the minutes of January 8, 2015. On page four of those minutes, comment by Mr. Ralph Marletti commenting on item 8.1E, fourth line down, and I'll read the sentence. He has concerns about the category of termination and hopes as much is done as possible to avoid or, and the word printed there is encourage that and that word should be discourage that. So I am making that amendment to the January 8th board minutes. And with that and the changes, we've already pulled item 9.1A. We have a comment?
We have public comment on 9.1C.
Okay.
Do you want to hear that now, President Wu?
Yeah, let's take that comment.
Okay, one comment from Mr. Ralph Marletti.
Mr. Marletti?
Yes.
Can this be on here? Over there? Anne? Thank you.
Once again, I'm Ralph Marletti from the Fruit Ridge area of South Sacramento. I'm strongly in favor of this field trip, Sutter Middle School, to Ashland, Oregon in early March, assuming it's a daylight trip, weather permitting. It's going to be some great scenery. I say to the students and staff, get all you can out of it, coming and going. Enjoy the views. For example, Lassen Peak, Lassen Peak here, I think, this is not going to, well, there is there. Enjoy the views of that. Mount Shasta, further north, Mount Shasta, a dormant volcano. Now, Lassen Peak off to the east from Red Bluff and Reading, it's going to be the 100th anniversary of its major eruption that occurred in May 1915. And Mount Shasta, further north, a dormant volcano, highest point in Northern California, some over 14,000 feet high. Lassen Peak is 10,000 feet high. Check the level of Shasta Reservoir as you pass by it on I-5. And you go over a 4,000-foot pass on I-5 on the California-Oregon border and all those banners in town in Ashland add to the ambience of the festival. So it should be a great time and I would say, why not involve other staff in preparing students for what they can see going up there and back? Any scenic rest spots along the way and back? So get all you can on all that beautiful scenery, hundreds of miles. So I say, go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Marletti. Let's take the items that Member Hanson, Vice President, Second Vice President Hanson wanted to discuss before we then vote on the consent agenda.
Facility staff was available to talk about the contracts. Wanted to talk about the Hancock Park and DeLong facilities contract for $118,000.
Yes, sorry. I regret not asking about this before, but let me just, so I saw the overall amount was potentially 118,000. And I know we did a remarkable job before on our ERP submissions and the amount of money we received. Did we use a consultant for that work?
So back in 2007, we contracted with this firm and a couple of other firms to help us in preparing all the paperwork necessary to submit to OPSC. No district had any idea that we weren't going to get the funding right away, so this is kind of a part two to their initial work done on the ERP program. So they helped us with the submission to OPSC, excuse me, Office of Public School Construction, to which we were ultimately funded an awful lot of money. We were, we got one round of funding. Remember, this was supposed to be a million dollars a year for eight years for $8 million. So we got the first year's funding and that was statewide. And then there was a dearth. So this last August and October, we got two rounds of funding. So now we're having to bring them back so that we can continue processing the applications.
Was this for the work that Mr. Hancock's company would do? Is that for new submissions or?
This would be for existing projects that were funded in August and October. The money comes from the state, so it's not any out of pocket for us. It's part of the ERP amount that was requested back in '07. So when states, when the Office of Public School Construction allocated these funds, they had various amounts for construction management, hard costs, soft costs, DSA plan check fees, et cetera. So part of that cost was taken into account, assistance with districts to help apply for the program. Each individual application, we had, I want to say well over 100 separate applications that went to the state. And this latest round, again, was about $22 million we got between August and October. So they'll help us on the back end of this, try and wrap all this stuff up and get the paperwork submitted to OPSC. Some of it's for reimbursables that we've already done the project on and then some of it will be for the work that we're doing this summer.
And this is stuff that we just aren't capable of doing ourselves?
It's pretty hard. If it was just one or two projects, but again, I think we're talking about well over 100 different applications, an awful lot of paperwork associated with each individual one. No doubt if it had just been a couple here and there, we would have been able to do that. And again, I wasn't here back in '07, but I would have done the same thing.
And so $118,000 would be about $6 million worth of projects if we were to do it at 2%. Do we anticipate $6 million of projects?
Well, we just were awarded 22 million and again, some of that was reimbursable. I don't have the data on what the original contract was with them. I'd be happy to look that up for you. But essentially, we hired them originally to help us do the applications, paid them a portion of that work, and since we never got funded for the projects in their entirety, we're now going back and reconstituting that. So this represents basically the difference between what they would have received had we've been funded 100%.
Okay. And I have a separate question on the second page. We're doing the recommended bid awards for the facilities projects, the gym addition at Cal Middle School. Are we a low bid district? So do we always accept low bids or do we have the ability to not accept low bids always?
Well, this particular project, you know, we try and mix it up between hard bid and least least backed, so we had enough time on this one, so we felt it would be good to throw it out for a hard bid. To not accept low bid, we would have to find the bidder non-responsive. Council might want to weigh in on this, but.
I was curious, have we used Best Buy or have we used any other kinds of bidding procedures if we do low bid always? And then do you know if we've done the PLA notification on this project since it's over a million dollars?
So in going back and looking at the PLA agreement, the Attachment A or the Exhibit A that has been referred to, that's actually the responsibility of the contractor to do. We certainly have it and would be more than happy to share it with the Building Trades Council, but it's the contractors that are actually supposed to share that with the building trades. So we're meeting with Mr. Farr tomorrow. We'll go over that and if we just need to make an adjustment and start sending him Attachment As, we can do that as well.
But I'd certainly recommend that because obviously they haven't been getting him for certain of the other projects. That was one of the things he stated, so I know it's, we shouldn't just rely on the contractor to do that, maybe, you know, because I don't know what the punishment is to the contractor if they fail to do that. They can just, I don't think we have anything written into our contract if they fail to send them.
It's just a listing of who their subs are, so yeah, I can understand why they would want it and there just may have been some miscommunication about whose role that was.
I appreciate that. That's all. Thanks. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
I had a second question on the state and federal programs, all the bids that we have for the supplemental educational services. We're authorizing there, you know, close to $800,000 worth of Title I funds. Do we know, can you say what schools those are going to? Are they going to a mixture of schools or?
Yes, they're servicing students throughout the district. This is a part of the NCLB program where parents choose their SES provider. So these are parents' choices. They chose those vendors and they then will service the students in the various schools throughout the district.
So are specific programs based at specific schools?
Through, as requested by parents.
First one, like I look at Elevate Learning. Are they just at one school or two schools or?
I'll need to research and provide that data for you. We can give you a list of all of the providers and where there are free services.
Yeah, I think that would be valuable because it would make this more comprehensive. I mean, I apologize once again for late asking a question. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but it'd be valuable on items like this to understand where these programs are, which schools are providing the services at.
Not a problem going forward. We would present that data.
Thank you. That's all. Mr. Wu?
Thank you, Second Vice President Hanson. So with that, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? I have a motion by Vice President Pritchett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice, Second Vice President Hanson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Repension's? Motion carries. Item 10.0, Board Workshop Strategic Plan and Other Initiatives. And before we begin, I'd like to recognize that today we must have some pretty important items on our agenda because I note that there is in our audience County Board of Supervisors, Phil Cerna, City Council Member and former school board member Rick Jennings, and a former school board member Manny Hernandez. So thank you for attending today and I'm sure that this will be of interest to you. So moving on to item 10.1, Approved Resolution Number 2819, Recognition of National No One Eats Alone Day, February 13, 2015. Member Ryan.
Good evening. I want to let everyone know that I'm struggling with bronchitis right now, so if my voice goes out a little bit, please bear with me. I am incredibly honored to have the opportunity to introduce this resolution and recognition of National No One Eats Alone Day, February 13, 2015. This is a youth-led national movement to end social isolation. As many of you know, social isolation affects students throughout our district and it can be particularly difficult in middle school, a very difficult transitional time for so many young people. I personally will tell you, as a young person going through the school district, I was one of those students who agonized about who I would eat lunch with and being recognized as being a free and reduced-priced lunch kid, I often would eat lunch in a bathroom stall so that people didn't understand that I was in fact receiving free lunch and that I didn't necessarily have a social network at my school. As Valentine's Day approaches, you know, it also is very difficult for so many of our young people who are grappling with this idea of will they receive a valentine? And the anxious anxiety that comes as a result of some of those challenges. As you know, social isolation can be detrimental in so many ways, affecting school attendance, affecting school achievement, often leading to depression and in worst-case scenarios, even suicide. And so anything we can do to elevate the conversation around social isolation and encourage more students to embrace differences and come together is warranted. I'm proud to say that this is part of a national movement that started as a result of a nonprofit that was formed called Beyond Differences. Beyond Differences was in response to the death of a young person, Lily Smith, who did face social isolation and really had suffered a rare condition that ended up leading to her untimely death at the age of 15. What's remarkable is that her classmates banded together to make a difference and to come together to make the path easier for students who would follow. And so they lifted up Lily's story and really used it as a rallying cry to ensure that social isolation was being talked about in middle schools across the country and that youth were reaching out to other youth to begin those difficult conversations in their classrooms, on their campuses and at their dinner tables. Right now, I'm pleased to say that more than 350 schools and 200 school districts across the country have adopted No One Eats Alone resolutions. And in this school district, we are working with middle schools to make sure that this is a frame of conversation for February 13th. Right in my own district, I'm proud to say that Father Keith B. Kenny is embracing this program and using this as a way to really support the incredible anti-bullying efforts that Sacramento City Unified School District has led the way in. It's also important to note that Sacramento City Unified School District has been really a leader in employing a full-time bullying prevention specialist. But we know that even with having one full-time bullying prevention specialist, unless we have a cultural sea change, we will not see the types of conversations that need to happen to ensure that students are not bullied, are not left in the corner of the lunchroom and feeling like they don't have an identity or a place on their school campus. So I'm proud to introduce this resolution and I will say, now therefore be it resolved that the Sacramento City Unified School District joins Beyond Differences in proclaiming February 13, 2015, National No One Eats Alone Day and encourages all middle schools to join in the effort and hold a No One Eats Alone Day on their campuses.
Thank you. Any comments?
We have one public comment on this item from Angie Sutherland.
This is a hard topic for me. Sorry. I had to come and talk.
So much for having the courage to come speak.
It's just filling me with emotion because I'm really happy that this day is being honored and will become a part of our district. There's a lot of students out there that feel isolated and shunned sometimes. And I just remember last year, my daughter just kind of going from group to group and being shunned. So it's happening on February 13th, which is the same day as the SEL Summit, so it's a good day to kick that off and, sorry, I got emotional, but just wanted to say that I support this and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sutherland. Another?
We have one more comment on this item from Adrian Moreno.
Hello, Superintendent Banda and President Wu and all board members. I am speaking in support of No One Eats Alone Day. It's important for all kids to be accepted and all others to accept everyone's differences. I am glad that Sac City is recognizing that this day is important. So thank you for creating a day that all kids are included in.
Thank you. Thank you. Any discussion among us of staff? Member Ryan, I'd entertain a motion then.
I make a motion that Resolution Number 2819 be moved in recognition of National No One Eats Alone Day, February 13, 2015, and beyond.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Member Roy, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Member Ryan. 10.2, Potential 2015-16 Budget Reductions, Restricted Funds. Mr. Castillo. Don't Mr. Smith with you.
I will start speaking while the presentation goes on the screen. Good evening, President Wu, Superintendent Banda, and members of the board. Tonight, Mr. Smith and I will present 2015-16 budget reductions for restricted funds. We will cover the California economic outlook and what it means for Sacramento City Unified School District. We will explain the difference between restricted funds and unrestricted funds. We will define quality education investment act or QEIA. We will go over the current schools and positions funded with QEIA and the recommendation to help the schools that will lose QEIA after this fiscal year and also for the budget recommendations for 2015-16, they eventually will begin 1617 and you will see why. We will go over the next steps. So, the economic outlook is being positive and we are very grateful that our governor is putting his emphasis in K-12 education. So, however, we need to remember that most of the new fund that we are getting, many of that is one-time funds because he is focusing and paying the wall of debt, so we need to focus on long-term and be cautious in, you know, the spending to avoid fiscal commitments that are ongoing. We touched these bases in the previous board meetings. So, what is restricted and unrestricted funds? In a simple term, unrestricted, we could use those funds for anything as long as it's legal, unrestricted funds. Restricted, on the other hand, we need to use those according to the law, like for instance, QEIA is one of those funds. And some of those funds can't afford specific schools and we cannot change the funding from those schools to another schools or use it for another purposes. Otherwise, we have a risk of paying those money back or having a penalty. So, that's the main difference. So, what is QEIA? Really, was established in 2007-8 and the main purpose really was to reduce class sizes and provide staff development for specific schools. At one time, Sacramento City Unified School District, we used to have up to 12 schools, A Elementary, 1KA, 1 Middle, and 2 high schools. So, we were receiving about 7.1 million per year for District Y. And last year of funding for most of our schools was 2012-13. And the state eventually realized, you know, they were cutting 20% that they could not maintain, we could not maintain the class sizes that they were required for most of schools were 20 to 1. So, we now know that 2014 is the final year of QEIA funding. So, it's the bottom part, the last line in the bottom, we are allowed to carry over from 1516, but we will not have any more QEIA funds. So, what is QEIA funds right now? So, we have 2 schools left, 2 high schools, Highland Johnson High Schools and Luther Burbank. Highland Johnson funds 6 certificated positions and 4.25 classified positions. Luther Burbank, 18.75 certificated positions and 2.8 classified positions. So, our recommendation is these schools have been receiving funding for 8 years and therefore it will be very difficult to just say there's no more funding for 1516. So, there has been a plan about using carryover funds and also unrestricted general funds to about 73% of the we're receiving in the prior years. So, we, the state is not providing a soft landing, but the district, we are recommending a soft landing. In addition to that, the state helped a little bit by saying, you know, we are not providing any more funding, but you're gonna, they give us 9.9 millions more than what we're expecting for this year. These positions that we review before, school administration will determine how we will continue for next year. So, that, oh, what did I do? Okay, so I'm sorry about that. So, our recommendation it is to eliminate those positions for 2016-17 because the funding is, we will not longer continue. So, we will continue looking for alternative funding sources to maintain positions and there might be some positions that might eventually become a March 15 notice, but at this point in time, we're working with the school size and the central administration, we believe that we were able to maintain most of those positions for next fiscal year. This is something that we did before, like for the other funds, like the Medicare funds in prior years. So, our next steps is that, you know, we want to give the board and the community plenty of time to analyze this data. We proposed the action and the start recommendations by the next board meeting. We need to follow our budget calendar with adjustments as necessary. Another thing that's important is that we need to follow the L cap process. And we said on the first slide, we must be vigilant in all expenditures to avoid fiscal So, at this point in time, Mr. Smith and I are available to answer any questions.
Ross.
We have 2 public comments on item 10.2 from Darlene Anderson and Liz Guian.
Darlene Anderson, I always find it amazing whenever we come up to talk about funding that we never find out just what we did with that money, how it affected those school sites, and if it's even useful to continue the funding because we're not talking about student achievement. This district really needs to have some accountability. I said before about African-American students and how school-wide programs operate under Title I. And some people seem to think that if you get Title I, you're helping all the kids so you don't have to identify what you're doing for the Title I students. They think the same about the LCAP money, which is not true. When you go to the legislation, they're arguing like this is really going to make a difference for our community, the LCAP process and the local control funding process. It's not going to make a difference because this board already approved that they would limit participation from community people about that process. Somewhere early in the 80s, I believe, that the community voted that they would elect local board members to represent them as for their children. But what do you do when the local board refuses to look at the real issues and continues to focus on jobs? I really don't know. Children only have a short time. 12 years is not a lot. But then we can elect a district attorney to lower prostitution in Sacramento because we have so many young people who get out of public school and go prostitute themselves. I do not understand the logic behind the use of funds for positions when they don't make a difference and they're not making a difference for the purpose of the use of the funds. It's so critical that people start to understand that the African-American community has to stand up and that you need to be held accountable for the failure of those students in this district and you have not been. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, good evening. I'm Liz Guian with Public Advocates. I want to thank our Budget Division for their work making financial information much more accessible than it's ever been with the website page for the Local Control Accountability Plan or the LCAP linked directly to the monthly district and school site expenditure reports. It's going to be a lot easier for parents and the public and the board, assuming the Budget Oversight Committee will be looking at this, to figure out together how those positions can be maintained because we're talking a good number of positions in some schools where the students are quite needy. I think that the fact of this accessibility of the information sends such an important message that spending of state dollars is critical to monitor and that it's possible to monitor. And I think that it contributes to the overarching message that the change in the system, the funding system, really includes a culture shift around transparency or what that really means for parents is being able to use the information. That said, I know that projections are a critical part of budgeting and I respect the work of Mr. Castillo and his Budget Division, but I always like to encourage folks that are monitoring budget to look at projections from a trend perspective and then compare that with actuals since sometimes they can be misleading. I think it's important to be able to have that past information as a way to try to figure out where you're going to get the funding for these positions and know that it can be done. I appreciate the information about the ability to carry over. It led me to the department's website to learn more about it because I think other districts will be struggling with it as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion from my colleagues? Member Rodriguez.
Thank you, President Wu. It deeply saddens me that I'm the only one that frequently comments on issues of financial matters. I just have to state that in the onset. Oftentimes, I'm the first one that speaks and concerns me, so. I brought this issue to light back in November of last year and I do want to express my appreciation to you, Mr. Castillo, for your follow-up and your keeping this on the radar and your commitment to a soft landing for these schools. You know, I do find that a school like Luther Burbank who uses most of their QEIA funds for instruction for teachers and counselors, which is critical to the well-being of that school and the students, you know, I think that this board needs to understand that we need to place a priority on Sac City Unified School District. We are elected members of Sacramento City Unified School District. We don't serve on other boards and commissions and we can't serve 2 masters. Our first priority is Sacramento City Unified and the students that we serve and the families that we serve. In the next item, you'll hear why I'm saying, making these comments, but I think that it's really important, I just want to stress upon everyone, that we can't have this activity where we're up here listening to a budget cut item and then the very next item, we're looking at vague details and that's where I'm just going to leave it at. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Rodriguez. I see no other comments. This was a conference and first reading, so I thank Mr. Castillo and Mr. Smith. When will you be back?
For the next board meeting.
Okay. So, February 19.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 10.3, Authorized Facility Repurpose and Reuse Proposals for Negotiations. Ms. Allen. And while she's walking up here, I wanted to also recognize the presence of Council Member Jay Sheneer, so.
Again, good evening, President Wu, members of the board, and Superintendent Banda. Tonight is the next step in our process around our recently closed sites that began quite some time ago. Tonight, we're going to talk about, briefly review the steps that we've taken so far. We'll discuss the review process that we used with the proposals. I'll share some of the comments that were made by the reviewers and we'll show the total scores and then discuss our next steps. So, going back as far as March of 2014, where the 7-11 Committee presented to the board and made a recommendation to not surplus any of the sites. What followed from there was a draft proposal format. We conducted many site tours. We started talking about fee structure. We had a community forum, did more discussion on the proposal format, and the final proposal shared, was shared with interested parties prior to about mid-November. So, proposals were due on December 15. We received 4 of them. They're on your screen. Tau Holistics and Partners, they would like Fruit Ridge Elementary. La Familia Counseling Center would like Maple. And Camellia Waldorf is interested in CP Huntington and then Sacramento Performing Arts is interested in Washington Elementary. So, I've mentioned before, we tried to mirror the process for our charter school applications for the review process by asking various departments to do the reviews of the proposals for comments within their area of expertise. So, we did bring in a member from the most recent 7-11 Committee. We had Budget Services participate. We had someone from Curriculum and Instruction participate, from Student Support and Health Services, and then also Facility Support Services staff. So, this slide, and I apologize for the small print, but we really wanted to get all the comments on here. These were comments that were made by the reviewers during their process. They are all unedited and since this represents the work of 5 individuals, you might see comments listed more than once. Some highlights, this is for the Performing Arts Group that's interested in Washington. They have included that they will serve students within the district and also other local districts. They're a nonprofit. They offer affordable group instruction and performances and shows. I'm obviously not going to read all of that for you. Move to the next one, which is Camellia Waldorf. Again, they're interested in CP Huntington. Some comments included lots of letters of support, a stable history of meeting their financial obligations. This would be a relocation, not an expansion of one of their facilities. This is a private school and one comment has indicated that there may not be a direct benefit to Sac City Unified Students. So, Tau Holistics and Partners is interested in Fruit Ridge Elementary. They are coming in as a Fruit Ridge Community Collaborative Support Center. They partnered with many entities to provide the services listed in their proposal. Comments range from a broad variety of organization. It meets all the criteria in the proposal. It was a very detailed vision. They have a mentoring program and a great concept for the community. They would like a waiver of rent during the move-in phase. And some reviewers were a little unclear about the financial arrangements with the partners and this proposal is also specifically designed to meet neighborhood needs. The La Familia Counseling Center is interested in Maple Elementary. Reviewers' comments included a clear description of the organization, goals, and products. There was numerous support letters, excellent description of benefits for the district families and community, and it's very well-established. They are looking to expand their existing services and offer new services at the site. La Familia is also requesting a reduced rental rate due to the benefits to SCUSD and its So, these represent the total scores of the 5 reviewers. So, it's not intended to be an endorsement of any particular group. The scores simply represent how the reviewer felt the organization answered the questions that were in the proposal. So, our next steps for tonight is we are requesting authorization to move forward with negotiations with any, some, all, none of the 4 applicants listed on the screen. We could begin negotiations as early as next week. We discussed at our Ad Hoc Facilities Committee meeting earlier today that it We discussed at our Ad Hoc Facilities Committee meeting earlier today that it might be appropriate to bring back our draft proposals for the committee to review, take it back, do a little bit more work on it, and then eventually bring draft proposals back for the Board's review at a later meeting. With that, I'm sure we probably have some comments.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Mr. Ross. Are we organizing our comments?
We have 23 comments on this item.
You know, organize them by facility or...
I'm afraid that not all the commenters indicated a specific facility, so we'll read them all together, if that's okay.
Yeah, you can shuffle them.
All right. I'll read the first five names. If folks can please line up behind the podium in the order you're called. Phil Cerna, Jay Chenier, Rick Jennings, Jeff Harris, and Patrick Kennedy.
I failed to recognize Councilmember Harris and Supervisor Kennedy. I didn't even see them. But be that as it may, he'll be coming before us.
President Wu, members of the Board, Phil Cerna, Chairman of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, very happy to be here tonight to speak on this important matter. Really, certainly want to start with commending staff and all the work on behalf of the community and those that have put forth proposals for reuse of these facilities. The main message I wanted to convey this evening is I want a partnership, and I think you're probably going to hear that as a theme from some of the other electeds. Moving forward, I would hope that this district, your staff, your Board understands that you certainly have a partner in me, and I think you'll hear from others in that regard. So, with that, certainly I'm here to answer any questions you might have about the details of that. But I certainly want to endorse La Familia. These are the most important people in the room, as far as I'm concerned. And I think, as many of you know, Fruit Ridge Elementary, while it's in the city of Sacramento in District 5 and Councilmember Chenier's district, really is at the heart of what is called the Fruit Ridge Pocket, South Oak Park neighborhood, which is largely unincorporated. And so, again, you'll hear from Jay about that perhaps in greater detail. But he and I, and I'm happy to say, have been working in partnership on a number of different initiatives to, as well as Board Member Ryan, on a number of different initiatives to improve that community. As you know, the school was kind of the last institution at the geographic heart of the community when it closed. I think it really was incumbent upon us all, including all the electeds that represent the area in and around that neighborhood, to really focus on what we can do to improve it. And so, tonight, I'm hoping that you'll take the first steps to do that. So, thank you very much.
Councilmember.
Mr. President and members of the Board, it's really a pleasure to be here. And I know that this is a step in a long process that you all have been going through. I went to many of the school closure meetings, and they were painful for the neighborhoods. And I want to note that three of the four schools you're talking about right now are in my district. I think that beyond the pain that the closings caused, and I think most of us stayed out of it, it was a school board decision. I know it was a financial decision in many ways. There was a void in a lot of these neighborhoods where these schools had really taken themselves as the centers of neighborhoods. And so, for me, the most important thing is what can we do, and I bring from District 5, what can we do to partner to really create vibrant places for their neighborhoods once again? I'm here in support of a number of these things. I think La Familia does a great job. We've worked in partnership with La Familia over the last few years. I think they have the pulse of the neighborhood. And I stand very much ready and committed to work in partnership with them around their application to make it successful. I also think that Camellia Waldorf does a great job. CP Huntington is a nice school in a nice, quiet neighborhood that needs something brought to it and some life brought to it. You know, I know that Waldorf is a private school, but they have a set of children who deserve something better than the facility that they have right now. So, I'm very much in favor of doing that. I think it's a very nice fit for that neighborhood, and will really bring that to life as well. I think you have a good application for Fruit Ridge. Those are services that are probably more needed in that neighborhood than any of the others that we've spoken about. And Supervisor Cerna and I have talked about this and really stand ready to help them any way we can to raise funds for that and to do everything possible to see that that's successful as well. So, as Supervisor said, I stand ready to partner with the school district on these issues to make sure that we're doing the right thing for our young people. Thanks very much.
President Wu, Board of Directors, and Superintendent, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight about this important, one of the most important things I think we can do in our community. As Jay said, closing the schools was very painful. I think we can help to eliminate some of that pain by doing the right things and reopening those schools and finding a use that can benefit the community. Whenever I drive by a school that has been closed and there are no kids there and there's no activity, and you start looking at that and you say, how can we take this building, how can we take this facility and put it to good use for the community? And that's got to be our next question for ourselves. If kids are not going to go there to get educated, then how can we use those facilities to benefit our kids and their families? And so, if these were in District 7, I'd be standing here with a proposal in front of you right now, because I know we could find a use for it for our families and our community. But what I want to do is let you know that the partners that you have that have submitted proposals, they have a proven history of working with this district and working with our kids and working with our families. This is not their first rodeo as far as being, working with you and providing services with you. They will continue to do that in these new buildings and take care of these buildings if they were their own. They have, in some cases, La Familia has 40 years of providing services in the Sacramento community. And so, we have to take note that anytime you're in business for that long of a period of time, you know what you're doing and the community needs your services. And they understand the importance of a collaborative effort. So, they're not going to try to do it by themselves. They're going to bring in other partners that are going to work with them in order to be able to meet the needs of our families. So, I know you're looking at these proposals seriously, and I thank you very much for doing that. All we're asking at this point in time is that we move to the next step. And then this will come back in order for you to be able to make all the final decisions, which I'll be back to talk to you at that time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember. While Councilmember Harris is coming up to the podium, I note that I saw Supervisor Kennedy walk into the room, and if you don't know it, you're the next in line, so you might as well walk up.
Well, good evening, members of the school board. I see a lot of familiar faces. It's a pleasure for me to come here and speak to you. What I would like to address is the use of the Huntington School Site as a possible place to relocate the Camellia Waldorf School Program. I'd like to tell you about an experience that I had that brings me here. So, when John Moore School was about to close and when Alice Burney did close, I was on the steering committee that helped relocate that program to Alice Burney. So, it's a Waldorf program, and it's been one of the most successful programs in the school district. It's been growing. It's thriving. And as CP Huntington sits unused and Camellia Waldorf, which is a very vibrant program as well, looks for a home, I think this is an excellent use for that program. You know, it's really about education of children. It's not about private or public programs. It's not about union or non-union. It's really about educating our kids. So, I would encourage you to look at this closely, to encourage you to enter into negotiations with Camellia Waldorf, because it is a proven program of many, many years, 20-plus at its current site. And many, many wonderful kids have been educated there. So, I would encourage you to just look at this program carefully. I think that it will invigorate the neighborhood and will lead to the successful education of a number of children in Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris.
As Supervisor Kennedy approaches the microphone, if our next five speakers can please line up in the order you're called. Manny Hernandez, Ana Negron, Terrence Gladney, Frank DeYoung, and Katie McCleary.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the Board. I have to say, this is the first time I've ever spoken from this podium before. And it was always this close. Just for you. Yeah. I'm just here today, Patrick Kennedy, County Supervisor, District 2, and I'm here today to speak very, very strongly about the proposal that has been put forward for Maple Elementary School. This is not only something that will serve that neighborhood, that surrounding area, better than really the services have ever been served in that area, but this is coming from an organization that already has the trust of the community. It's coming from an organization that's already in the living rooms of those communities. When they wanted to see what is it that people want in this community? What is it they need? The La Familia folks, along with the Franklin Boulevard business people, they went out and they actually canvassed and they knocked on doors, you know, find out what is it the community wants, so that you and I aren't sitting here telling the community what they want, but we're actually listening to what the community wants. And this La Familia proposal will deliver those services that will strengthen the neighborhood, serve those families. And I strongly hope that you will, at least as the councilmember said, at least let that go to the next phase into negotiations to start talking about how we can utilize that facility for the betterment of the community. So, thank you very much for giving me your time.
Supervisor.
On behalf of La Familia, speaking as a Board Member, Manny Hernandez and former colleague of you all here. So, thank you for having us. Thank you. I'm just going to say two things, and I'm going to let others speak, because I don't want to use my full two minutes. First, I ask you, is the school being currently used? I know for a fact that Maple Elementary School is not being used. Secondly, will the proposal meet the urgent needs of the community? If the answer is yes, we ask you to approve. Thank you. Next.
I'm Rick Bransman, President of the Board of La Familia. We just urge you to approve this next step tonight. Working with partners, we've developed a long list of services based on input from the community that we are eager to get underway. Thank you.
Good evening, President Wu and school board members. I have had the honor of working with La Familia Counseling Center as a district representative for both Senator Ortiz and Senator Steinberg for the past 13 years. And I can tell you that every time I leave a collaborative meeting, I am so impressed at the work that they do and how they help the community. Over the last year, I've had the honor of teaching the Zumba class there, and it is a free class for all of the community. And we are now up to 29 moms that come with their kids, and we even provide play care for them. So, the services that they offer, I just am overwhelmed by, and I hope and pray for your approval for the facility today. And I just want to ask all of those supporting La Familia today, could you please stand? With all our gratitude, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Michael Spurgeon. I'm a tenured professor at American River College in English. I'm also the co-founder and Board President of 916, Inc., a program dedicated to children's literacy. I just want to say we are excited to partner with La Familia and look forward to your approval. Thank you.
Just by way of introduction, these are two of our key Board Members as well. Leo, I don't think they're going to ask to speak today, Leo, and Kit, I just call her Kit. So, just raise a hand and thank you for having us. Okay, we're just trying to save time. I know you go till midnight, close to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
Good evening. Terrence Gladney, President of Sacramento Council, PTA. You guys can appreciate, as well as our Board, that, you know, the work on behalf of all our kids in the district is oftentimes too much for the hands that we have. You guys are a Board of, what, like seven or eight, nine? And we have a Board of about, you know, seven, eight, nine. We don't have, you know, an entire district staff to support the work that we do. So, we were relieved and really blessed to be approached by the Fruit Ridge Collaborative. They welcomed us and invited us with open arms to be a part of their mission and their vision. And we sought as an opportunity to extend the hands that we have, the few hands that we have, and do the work on behalf of our kids. We're really proud to be with such a great group of nonprofit partners that will join our partners, such as the school district and our other partners across the city, to do the work that we do. And it's just an opportunity for like-minded organizations to partner and be in one space, similar to some of the features that we have here at the enrollment center of the district. We really feel that the Fruit Ridge Collaborative will be such a service for those families who we disenfranchised by closing what was so near and dear to their heart. I do really want to thank Judy Smith, who spearheaded this whole effort. When I look at the work that she's done, it really reminds me of the work of Benita Ayala, who's our Close Closet Chair. She really just leads with her heart, and she's put in hours and hours and hours of work so that all of our partners can hopefully exist at that location and serve the needs of that community. So, our Board does stand in support of the Fruit Ridge Collaborative, that we might be able to restore some of the warmth to that community. Thank you.
Mr. Gladney, I take it you're speaking on behalf of the PTA Close Closet?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And the entire Sacramento Council, PTA Board.
Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Banda, President Wu, Board. My name is Frank DeYoung. I'm speaking this evening as a committee person, not committee person, a community person who lives in the Brentwood community. I live three and a half blocks away from CP Huntington. And I know that there will be some concerns about Camellia Waldorf being a private school, but I don't have those concerns. Camellia Waldorf has reached out to us. He's met with it. They have met with the community. They have talked to us. They're willing to be a community partner. I could argue that the kids going to that school live in the city of Sacramento, regardless of whether they go to a private school or not. I'm tired of seeing an empty school. I want the school to be used for what it was designed to be, which is a school, and I believe it will serve the community in ways that we haven't even thought of yet. There are a lot of things that would revitalize our community and invite people to move to our community, which we have been, you know, not a dying community, but we need more young families. And this will, having an anchor school of any kind there, will attract people to move to our community, and I think it's a real positive. And I request the Board to please push this forward so they can go into negotiations and move forward to this. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. DeYoung.
As Ms. McCleary approaches the microphone, if our next five speakers could please line up. Monica Hernandez, Rachel Rios, Simeon Gant, Karen Daly, and Judy Smith.
Hi, thank you for having me today. I'm Katie McCleary, and I'm the founding executive director of 916, Inc. And what we do is we transform everyday kids into confident authors. We have been looking for a place to open up our Young Authors' Palace, which is a whimsical classroom where students ages kindergarten through 12th grade can come and hone their literacy skills through creative writing. To date, we've published over 1,300 kids in 42 different publications, and we celebrate their voice. And when we celebrate their voice, something unlocks inside of them. Their academic confidence improves, their grades improve, and their sense of citizenship also improves. We're part of the La Familia project, and as part of our efforts to open the Young Authors' Palace, we have received over $160,000 in support for our portion of the project from the Metro Chamber of Commerce, the Harvard Gold Family Foundation, which owns very many prominent restaurants in town for summer camps, the California Endowment, the Orchard Foundation, and the Sacramento Region Community Foundation. All of these funds will go to help opening our Young Authors' Palace. And I urge you that time is of the essence. that time is of the essence. If we are not really able to move forward in a quick manner, I will be forced to go and find another space. Our mutual benefit to the district will be to serve at least 200 kids from Sacramento City Unified School District per year, publish them into books, and that benefited over $80,000 to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. McCleary.
I'm Monica Hernandez with the Sacramento Area Councilor Secog. You may have seen our letter of support and the proposal. I'm here because we are committed partner to working with La Familia on the reuse of Maple School, and I urge you to move forward and consider this opportunity to move forward in negotiations. I want to acknowledge all of your staff's effort and your thoughtfulness in developing this process. I know it's been a very difficult time, and the closing of the schools was very difficult for many of you. We are very happy to support La Familia. They have a proven history in Sacramento, over 40 years helping to do community development issues, and we bring to table technical assistance through specific grant funding that has been identified and has already been secured. We're happy, and we want to use it, and we can use it with your support. We want to work with the city and the county as well in improving transportation options to access Maple School and return it to its true community asset and value that it was once. And we think that we will have a great collective impact, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Wu, school board members, Superintendent Banda, and district staff. Thank you for bringing this issue forward tonight. We appreciate the hard work of the district staff in reviewing the proposals. We also want to acknowledge the work of the 7-11 Committee that came before early on to review our concepts in repurposing of the school and that supported our agency and our services at that site, at the Maple site. Tonight, we want to urge you to approve our proposal for the reuse of Maple Elementary and to please take action to move our proposal to the next level by authorizing the district to begin negotiations with us. This action will still allow you, as a board, to review and approve any final agreement between our entities. Your action to move our proposal forward does not create any risk to the district or to the community, but unfortunately, inaction does. La Familia has worked hard with our partners, 916, Inc. and Fairy Tale Town, as well as others, to identify support and resources for this project. We are concerned that continual delays in making progress on this project jeopardizes those resources. But more importantly, opportunities to address critical gaps and service needs that the community needs are continuing to be delayed. The school closures were very traumatic for the community and tragic, but leaving facilities vacant that were once vibrant with children's laughter and activities that can also be so once again, leaving those vacant is significantly devastating to our communities as well. We respect the enormity of the decision before you, but we trust that you, as our school board members, you know our community. You know your community. You know your districts, and you know the needs of the children that you represent. And I think you would agree that they deserve to have a place like the La Familia Community Center. So we urge your favorable vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rios.
Good evening, President Wu, superintendent and fellow board members. My name is Karen Daly, and I'm here speaking tonight on behalf of the Brentwood Neighborhood Association that surrounds CP Huntington School. We met several times with people from Camellia Wardorf School, and we're impressed with their proposal and are happy to support them in taking over our vacant school. We love the voices of children, and we miss them. So I would like you to consider to support the Camellia Wardorf, but not for just the two years that the district personnel has suggested. It wouldn't be worth it for them to move, but we want them there, so please suggest to your staff they at least extend to at least a 10-year agreement with the school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Daly.
Good evening, President Wu, board members. I just want to thank you so much for taking the time to listen to us, and I am here to speak on behalf of the Fruit Ridge Community Collaborative. I would also like to thank the 7-11 Committee, and all the staff have been amazing at helping us get through this difficult kind of negotiations with everything. I've been a resident of the Fruit Ridge Community for about 30 years. My background is education, social services, counseling, and I am definitely a social entrepreneur. In driving by Fruit Ridge, all of my children attended school their whole education, I mean, their whole elementary education. And it saddened me so much to see this beautiful school built in 1937 sitting there empty, so it just kind of hit me collaboratively. So I started calling around the country and talking to people, and next thing I know, I was getting all kinds of phone calls from people really interested in what was going on with the collaborative. We worked really hard to get very strong organizations that were not doing duplication of services to be able to go into this community that is really underserved. In fact, it was referred to as Ground Zero. And it's just really disheartening to see people kind of wandering around, whether they be seniors, adults, children, our young, our youth, and we really need to get that support. I also wanted to address one thing. We are in the process right now with Tides Center for them to become our fiscal sponsors, and they are expediting the process and are very excited about the possibility of bringing this collaborative together. We've got great, strong organizations, as you can probably see in the proposal. So I think they're all very longstanding organizations, and we decided to, you know, do this with the fiscal sponsorship, because Tides is a very strong organization, and we can really focus on helping the community. And my passion is as real as it might seem beyond that. I just know that we can make a change and start to see this community thrive. So I thank you so much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rios.
Good evening, Board President and Board Members. My name is Simeon Gant, and I am also part of the collaborative with Judy. I want to thank Judy for bringing my organization on this team. I am the executive director of Green Technical Education and Employment. And some of the work that we'll be doing inside of this collaborative, when it is approved, because we certainly will hope that you guys do approve this, the work will be 21st Century Career Opportunities and Job Skills. We'll be teaching our young folks about careers in clean energy and energy efficiency and sustainable living strategies. And right now, we see that our young folks are looking for something to do with their education beyond just going to class. They want some hands-on opportunities to learn. And this will allow us to work in these facilities to teach them clean energy skills, installing solar panels, energy efficiency buildings, and that sort of thing, alternative fuel vehicles, and moving into 21st Century job skills. And so those are the type of career opportunities that we're going to bring to bear in this building at the Fruit Ridge Elementary School. The other side of it all, right now, as long as it's empty, it is a public safety issue. The activities that can go on in that area right now can be a problem, and so we would like to fill that space and do some real good community work and educational opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gant.
If our next five speakers can please line up, Alicia Hamilton, Luis Peralas, Rosalba Moreno, Asante Melanga, and Marty Brown.
I am actually here as a community member. My mother is also Judy Smith, but I came from this area, moved to the Natomas area, and then actually brought my family back to the area that we're in now. I live about probably four blocks away from the possible Fruit Ridge Collaborative. So much energy has gone in for my mom. It's been a really time-consuming process, but something that she's loving. She's investing her heart and soul into this, because she really wants to see it thrive in the area that it's in. And she's always about those that are underserved, so I'm really glad to see the energy moving forward in a really positive way. I know that we would really love to see it go to the next phase so that we can kind of continue on with this and really have it, you know, become solidified and, you know, really kind of see the doors open and move forward with that. So we really take it very serious as far as the area that we're in. There's been a lot of focus on other areas within kind of the Oak Park area, so we kind of would like to see that move over to where we're located. I think it's very, very, very necessary, so we just hope to, you know, see that you guys make a decision on this really soon. Thank you so much for your time.
And for the record, and for your fans on television who might be watching this, your name is?
Alicia Hamilton.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton.
Good evening, everyone, and I'm sorry, I'm going to be a little bit nervous, first time I'm doing this. We've been with La Familia Counseling Center for 17 years since they started at the relocation, and our vision is to teach kids sports, martial arts. That's what we do. And what else? I'm sorry.
We would love to grow this program. We currently have two schools, one in Medevy Community Center and one with La Familia Community Center, and would love to go out there and show kids how to get confidence, discipline, and courage. Also, we just love these kids so much that we want more of the community to know that we are out there, and it is a free nonprofit organization that we do run.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Luis Peralas and Magda Velazquez.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Asante Melanga. I'm 19 years old and a recent GED graduate through La Familia's GED program. I'd like to acknowledge David Akala from the Community Collaborative Charter School at La Familia, and Joseph Kwong, also from the GED program at La Familia. If it wasn't for La Familia, I don't think I would have received my GED in a two-week period. Before being in the GED program, the mentors saw the potential in me that I didn't even see in myself, which encouraged me to do more for myself. With that being said, in a matter of two weeks, I completed my social studies and science test with higher test scores than my preferred languages such as English and math. I received my GED October 20, 2014. As of today, with the help of La Familia, I've enrolled myself into Sacramento City College with a total of 14 units and majoring in child education and/or development. David Akala was kicked out of school early fall of 2014, but was able to enroll into Community Collaborative Charter School into La Familia. David was able to graduate with a high school diploma in December of 2014. Now he is also attending Sacramento City College, majoring in journalism. Joseph Kwong was expelled from high school and came to La Familia with hopes of getting his GED. About a year ago, he realized he wanted to attend college. Joseph completed his GED last fall and will attend Casunas River College over the summer of 2015 with the intentions of majoring in mechanics. Because of La Familia, we were provided with so many opportunities, we were all able to become empowered with confidence to do more than what we had the confidence to do. We all believe that La Familia's expansion to Maple Elementary School will offer and provide more opportunities, programs, and activities for the youth and the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Melanga, and congratulations on your GEDs.
If our next five speakers can please line up, Kathy Fleming, Kanonki Israel, Chuck Rucker, Dr. Guly Saba, and Lisa Miller.
Good evening, President Wu and board members. My name is Marty Brown, and I'm the executive director of the North Franklin District Business Association. As some of you know, and some of you will come to know, well, actually, first, let me say this. I know you'll be surprised to hear that I'm here speaking on behalf of the board in favor of the La Familia Counseling Center's proposal for the Maple School site. I'm sure that's a surprise to you, given the outpouring this evening. But I wanted to also say that the association, some of you already know and some of you will come to know, we've been working on a community economic development plan for a couple of years now, and we're actually nearing completion. And at the centerpiece of that plan is health and building a healthy community. And I think you've heard many people this evening talk about how the long history that La Familia has in the neighborhood, in the region, in the city, on building a healthy community, especially focusing on youth and other health services. And so we really feel like there couldn't be a better partner for the business district, for the community plan that we're in the process of completing, that really exemplifies all of those aspects of building a healthy community for the North Franklin District. So we're really hopeful that this evening you will move forward and agree to continue with the negotiations for repurposing the Maple School site and work with La Familia Counseling Center. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Morales. I work at La Familia Counseling Center as a Family Resource Center Coordinator, and I'm here for translation purposes.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Rosalba Moreno. Nací en Arandas, Jalisco, México. Tengo dos hijos.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Rosalba Moreno. I was born in Arandas, Jalisco, México, and I have two sons, Brian and Juan.
Y desde hace 12 años, he recibido los recursos de la agencia La Familia.
For the past 12 years, I have received services through La Familia Counseling Center.
Ellos me refirieron al programa de WEEF para mujeres abusadas.
I first went to La Familia and was referred to WEEF, a domestic violence nonprofit.
También mis hijos han recibido consejería y servicios del psiquiatra de la familia.
My sons have also received counseling through La Familia Counseling Center.
También han recibido los servicios de karate, programas para jóvenes, y también los han ayudado a encontrar trabajo.
My sons have also been part of karate, have received youth services, and have received help finding jobs.
Yo y mi familia estamos muy contentos de esta agencia.
My family and I are very grateful for this agency.
Y también con las personas que ahí trabajan.
And also, we are also grateful for the staff who work there.
Mi hijo Juan es voluntario desde hace 10 años.
My son Juan has volunteered there for over 10 years.
Es muy importante que esto siga creciendo para que los jóvenes puedan lograr sus metas y mantenerse fuera de las calles.
It is very important that this continue to grow so that the youth can accomplish their goals and remain off the streets.
Ahora Juan está en un programa de transición y el próximo año va al colegio.
Juan is now in a transitional program, and next year he will begin college.
Y Brian está en el 12º grado ahora y ha aplicado para la Universidad de Montana y lo aceptaron.
Brian is now a senior in high school, has applied to Montana University, and has been accepted.
Yo estoy muy orgullosa de mis dos hijos, pero sobre todo gracias a la agencia de La Familia.
I am very proud of my two sons, but I owe much of it to La Familia.
Gracias por todo el apoyo que me brindaron y también a la gente que ahí trabaja. Gracias.
Thank you for all of your support and to all the people who work there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moreno, Ms. Morales.
Good evening, board, and thank you for your service to our community. My name is Kathy Fleming, and I'm the executive director at Fairy Tale Town. As educators, you know that play is absolutely essential to the physical, cognitive, social, and emotional development of children. The fact is well documented. The U.N., the United Nations, states that children have the right to play. The American Academy of Pediatrics say that play is the very definition of childhood, and as any human being will tell you, it's our favorite way to learn. Also well documented is the decline of play for children in today's society. In just one generation, a child's play radius from home has shrunk from one to two miles to about 70 feet, and the amount of time children spend in front of a screen has increased by about 70% in a decade. This makes safe places for play a very important community asset, and that's why we want to work with La Familia Family Counseling Center to provide supervised play provision at Maple School during out-of-school hours for neighborhood School during out-of-school hours for neighborhood children ages eight to fifteen. We have pledges of support to do this, to make it happen, from a wide variety of community organizations, ranging from Rotary Clubs to the Sacramento Tree Foundation, as well as a few individuals. We hope that you will approve the next step to begin negotiations with La Familia. It will make, it will also be the first step to make a vacant space a dynamic community asset. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Fleming.
Good evening, members of the board, and, uh, thank you for your service in our community. Um, I hear, I'm standing here before you as, um, a community member, um, also as the founder of the Israel Family Urban Farm. Uh, the Israel Family Urban Farm was created to empower, uh, employ, and inspire people through urban agriculture to make changes in their lives. Um, through the process of being able to be involved with the Fruit Ridge Community Collaborative, we've not been included in any of the talks that have been going on to be able to be a part of it. Um, we live right across the street from Fruit Ridge School, and my father lives two blocks away. We've been there, he's been there for over fifty years. So, we've not been included in, in any of the talks. We've talked to people over and over again to say, include us, so we can be a part of what's going on, and we've not been able to get a voice. So, I had no choice but to come here and to speak to you and understand that I want to work with the community, I've been in the community, and not only do I want to be a part of the community, but I feel that urban agriculture is something that can change people's lives, as we have proven all over this city. But at the same time, um, I want to be included, I want to be a part of the process, I'm willing to work with whichever partners that are there, but at the same time, um, I, I want to be a part of the process. So, I want this whole thing to go forward, um, with the partners that are there, but I'd like to be a partner too, because I live right across the street from the commu, from the, from Fruit Ridge Community, uh, Fruit Ridge School, and I want to make a difference too. Thank you.
Mr. Israel.
Good evening, members of the board. President Wu, excuse me.
The microphone moves up, too.
Oh, it does. I hit my head a lot, too. Well, I wanted to say, first of all, thank you so much for the last couple of years of all your thoughtful consideration and work, not just members of the board, but this, uh, facility staff, Seven-Eleven Committee, and the general community. It's been, uh, personally rewarding for me to meet so many members of the community, some of the board members yourselves, and, and some of the other folks that are involved in the process, so it's great. So, I just want to say a few words. My name is Chuck Rucker. I represent the Camilla Waldorf School. I'm a parent, I'm a soccer coach, and I'm passionate now about education too, so, um, what I'd also say is that nobody likes the idea of closing schools, and I certainly don't envy any of yours decisions and hard work that you had to do that, to go through that. This said, I believe Camilla Waldorf School represents the best possible outcome for this particular facility. To review, we're a small, twenty-five-year-old, uh, independent, private school. We've been, um, uh, we've been a very good, um, longtime tenant that's paid our rent on time and in full through really thick years and really thin years, too, and every single month we've, we perform for our landlord. But this evening, as you know, we've heard from parents, we've heard from the Brentwood community, we've heard from our council member Harris, our Vice Mayor Chenier, and many others that we've spoken with that may not have, uh, come up tonight. And I think, as you've heard, they've spoken the virtues of us joining their community and going into a facility and preventing, you know, a vacancy and potential urban decay. So, I want to be, I want to be here to tell you that, real quick, not only do we plan to be just a great tenant and a stable financial partner, we plan to be an excellent caretaker of the facility. We want to make sure that the building is looking great, is in excellent condition, and, you know, and be a great partner for the, the, um, the neighborhood all around. So, I have so much more to say, but I won't. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rucker.
Thank you so much for allowing me to share. My name is Lisa Miller, and I am the founder and executive director for Sealy, Inc. Our organization works with, um, uh, adults that have not launched, so we help them to get a GED, help them to get in school, and work with them through school, or help them to get a living wage job so they could be self-sufficient. Um, we have been in operations for about ten years. We are a smaller organization, one hundred percent volunteers, there are no paid staff, and our mentors and our tutors, we have twenty of them altogether, that meet, uh, our participants out in the community, will study with them at the libraries, or whatever it is they, they need, will help them with that process. The potential of being part of the Fruit Ridge Collaborative is just great for us, but not only will I be able to help the people that are in our program, but their children will have, uh, childcare. We have a community garden there, there is legal assistance there, so there's so many programs that can help the whole person and, and improve and increase our levels of success. I am for the Fruit Ridge Collaborative pro, uh, project. Me and my seven siblings all went to Fruit Ridge Elementary School. As a matter of fact, in the tour, I visited my kindergarten class, I remember Ms. Springer and our principal, Mr. Davis, so it's just, um, really seems like a, a perfect fit in the, in the thing that needs to happen, you know, uh, for our community and the homeowners that, people that we know, I've, I've known since I was a child, that still live in that community. Thank you so much for letting me share.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
If our final four speakers can please line up, uh, in the order you're called, Rachel Smith, Darlene Anderson, Marie Acosta, and Rhonda Staley-Brooks.
Good evening, President Wu and members of the board. My name is Dr. Glale Saba, and I'm a family physician and functional medicine physician, also a nutrition counselor, and I helped found the Fruit Ridge Elementary, uh, school garden along with, um, teachers, students, and lots of parents about over eleven years ago. Uh, while LAS and Fruit Ridge Elementary were on this campus as a volunteer, um, I helped teach nutrition and, um, get kids to really get interested and really love nature and, um, love the importance and the amazing things about science. Um, we also really, uh, one of the reasons we, we started was that we felt like, um, one of the best ways to get kids to be healthy later on is to really start to grow their own vegetables, because it's been shown that when they grow their own vegetables, they're much more likely to eat them, and, um, we hope to stem the tide of the chronic disease that we have in this country. The Fruit Ridge, um, Community Collaborative, um, I totally support their, um, their work and their mission. I'm so thrilled to see Judy and everyone that has been involved, um, to get together to use this amazing resource. We hope to continue to use the garden to teach, um, children and families the importance of, um, growing and eating healthy fruits and vegetables. I support this amazing community collaborative, which will bring much-needed services to the heart of Oak Park. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Saba.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rachel Smith. I am here in huge support for the Fruit Ridge Community Collaborative. Ms. Judy Smith has put in the time, effort, passion, dedication, the, everything you can think of, there's no one that could have put more passion into this project. I'm actually, uh, I've been lived in that community since I was five years old, I'm now three years old. I, I'm thirty-three years old. I actually, not three, thirty-three. I actually went to Fruit Ridge Community my whole life. I've gained some of the most best friends during my elementary school years, but sad to say, eighty percent of them or more have become criminals, murderers, drug dealers, and I know if they had the support that this community collaborative is bringing to the neighborhood, I know it could have changed lives, and it's just really important that that this neighborhood does not get neglected any longer and just has the support that is bringing through this community collaborative, and, and I just totally support and know that if it is able to be in that community, it can definitely change lives, as well as the elders and children, and, and we all know that it takes the community to raise a child, so I just hope that you guys, you know, take that into consideration and know that it is nothing but a positive thing that can come to that community. So, I thank you for your time and hope that you guys consider it deeply.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Good evening, Mr. President, honorable members of the board. My name is Maria Acosta. I'm the Director of La Raza Galería Posada. Just a few weeks ago, the Chairwoman of the National Endowment for the Arts flew out from Washington, D.C., to release the results of a study that the National Endowment for the Arts and the James Irvine Foundation have been conducting about how Americans participate and engage in the arts. And what they let all of us know was that Americans participate in the arts in parking lots, parks, churches, and schools. This is where Americans participate in the arts. These collaborations are potential national models for exactly what they have discovered, how we all, all Americans, participate in the arts. La Raza Galería Posada has the great fortune to, uh, engage families, businesses, and neighborhoods in our Day of the Dead Panteón de Sacramento in Midtown. What we've discovered is an increase in economic development for the merchants, an increase for our small business people where they sell their crafts, and over fifty Latino families who come together now every year for five years to create memorials and honor traditions of the Latino community. What we have here are remarkable collaborations in empty buildings in communities of need. We're hoping that these collaborations can demonstrate that potential to our country as national models, and in particular, we're supporting the La Familia and Fruit Ridge collaborations. We hope that you will review them favorably, favorably, they deserve your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Acosta.
Darlene Anderson, once again. I've lived in Sacramento since nineteen seventy-one. I graduated from Kennedy High School. I look around and I see that the district does partner with certain individuals and certain individuals they don't partner with. And as for the African-American community, there are few, very few partners that the district partners with, and it's very difficult. Even if you can graduate your child, your child goes to college, when they come home, a lot of African-American young people are at home with their parents. They're not employed. You see, pushing African-Americans into the public school system after Brown versus the Board of Education, I can say, I didn't see where it worked. I mean, I know that we're more freer than we used to be, but what's the use of freedom if you can't benefit from it? So, if you have children who are in your school system, who are actually graduating with a certificate of completion or through your, your credit recovery program, and these are unemployable people, because they don't have the social and emotional skills to deal in the public, even your community partners, although you provide funding for them, they serve a small amount of African-Americans too. So, all around, it's just an okay thing to ignore the African-Americans that you see on the street as you drive down the, down the street. Everybody sees them. Everybody knows that there are issues, but nobody's willing to talk about those issues. When your community partners, especially when you take funds that should be helping all children, and don't target an equal amount of support for all families, it's an issue. La Familia's been getting money for years and years to help everyone, and they help a few African-Americans, but on the whole, for what your district doesn't do, it's not enough. And more people need to understand that as long as there's one African-American person coming to this board meeting, it means absolutely nothing. There are a lot of African-Americans who watch the board meeting, I suggest they get down here, because Sacramento is not going to change until African-Americans get their behinds down here and hold you people accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Last but not least, my name is Rhonda Staley-Brooks, and I'm the President and CEO of Big Brothers, Big Sisters of the Greater Sacramento Area. I'm here representing my organization as part of the Fruit Ridge Community Collaborative. I'm excited about the collaborative for a couple of reasons. Grant funding, well, we'll just say zero, the grant funding is not there, the corporations are being stretched to give their dollars, and collaboration is what everybody wants to see. So, to stand here and see that so many people are out there trying to do good things together is important to me. It's important to my organization. See, finding a place, finding a home that will go to serving more kids is what I'd like to do. We serve children who come primarily from single-parent families, and for, in order for me to serve more kids, we have to reduce our expenses. See, I've been faced with laying off staff because we don't have enough money to do the work, and getting a partnership that will reduce our expenses by collaborating will help me hire more staff to do better things in the community. So, I urge you to look at the proposal, look at the partnerships, and there's room for more partners. This is just the beginning. Judy has done a lot of work to bring us to the table, and it's not easy. So, for Judy, I want to thank you. Thank you for trying to put this in order. She couldn't reach everybody. There's still room at the table. We just want to get something started and make a difference in the lives of these kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Staley-Brooks. Thought you'd gone home.
So, I don't have anything further unless you have some questions for me.
Vice President Pritchett.
Thank you. I just have a few questions about the next steps, and can you walk us through the process of what the negotiations will look like and what the time process will be?
So, the next steps would be, um, if you authorize us to go ahead, um, with any, all, or none of these, because none wouldn't make a difference, um, we would contact the individual who's, uh, what we call the LEA, or the Lead Agency, um, and ask them to come in and just start talking about what the proposals would look like. Um, it's very important for the district to, um, treat this as a joint-use proposal. We want to see what's kind of in it for us, if I can be so blunt. Um, some of the proposals have done a really good job of spelling that out, but we'd want to formalize that, um, at the same time, really sit down and, and take a look at what our costs are going to be, um, what is realistic to charge, um, you know, what the entities could do, and maybe they do need to break the first year, but those are decisions that would be brought to the board, uh, for approval. So, as I mentioned earlier, the Ad Hoc Facilities Committee, um, expressed an interest in maybe taking a look at, at the initial round of drafts, which I think is a great idea, and we could hash those out at that, at that level, and then maybe go back and work on a little bit and bring it back again, um, to another board meeting. So, so, timing is, um, I, I know it's very critical for a lot of these folks, we're, we're ready to move ahead, um, nothing really at this point holding us back, other than just the, the blessing of the board to move forward.
Thank you.
Member Rodriguez.
Hi, I have, um, a couple of comments and some questions along with it. Um, I mean, going back to, uh, Vice President Pritchett, um, she just asked you what would negotiations look like. Um, that's my major concern here, is that the board has had no formal, uh, discussion about what your parameters are before going into these types of discussions with any of the proposal-makers. Um, I think that, again, we're putting the cart before the horse. Again, we're not putting the best interests of our district in front and, and ahead of everything else. Um, I'm still vague about our fee schedule. Um, you know, I don't feel very comfortable with your response right now about, um, we want to see how much the organization can afford, when we, again, need to start thinking about, we are the Sac, Sacramento City Unified School District, our interests are first and foremost here, um, so we have an opportunity before us right now to start creating a revenue stream for us. Once we let these buildings out to other entities outside of conducting school education, um, we're losing a, a good population of students that we could actually gain at some point in the future. So, ADA comes attached with every single child. I don't see any of these financial considerations, um, being addressed in any of the materials that we have received, either in emails or in board packets. I'm extremely concerned about that, because I have a fiduciary responsibility here as a board member to be very responsible, to understand that our district has had recent board, um, budget shortcuts or shortfalls, and so it, for me to go forward with any proposal without having those questions answered is very irresponsible of me. I think it's ir- I think it's irresponsible, and you're putting us all in a very irresponsible position to give the go-ahead on that. I really, I gained a lot of clarity tonight from, especially the Fruit Ridge proposal because on paper, it really didn't pan out. It really didn't, like, explain itself the way that I heard from the public commenters. And I think that every single one of these nonprofit organizations, of course, they're coming in here because they're putting their interests first. Every single one of them is putting their interests first, which is rightfully so. Every single board member that came that represented those nonprofits put their interests first before our interests. We need to start doing that with our district, and we're not doing that. So that's what concerns me. How do you address this vague language surrounding this realistic financial outcome of, you know, what we stand to benefit from here? How do you address that and make me feel comfortable about moving forward tonight on any one of these proposals?
So we would sit down with the proposers and ask them the benefits that Sac City would get directly from their services. As we did with Fremont, we assessed a value to what was being offered, and in that case, it was in the form of internships and scholarships and tickets to various performances. We got online and saw what a typical two-week ballet class would cost, for example. So we ended up coming up with costs associated with that, which would be a direct benefit to the students who were going to benefit from Fremont. We could do something similar in that regard with the various groups that have come forth tonight. It would look a little bit different, you know, because it's not quite the same type of activity, but there's no reason why we couldn't use the same approach.
Also, I just want to add that, you know, this is an opportunity for us to entertain these conversations, to be able to determine not only what they're able to provide as services and, as you outlined, what are the benefits to the district, but also we have a set of fee schedules we can look at. I know in working with Ms. Allen here that she's always mindful of, are we able to pay for at least our costs? And then we can look beyond that if there's an opportunity to even make more than that. I think what's really important also to remember is, and we've heard it from everyone that's come up to speak, is we have vacant schools. They're sitting vacant. They're not, they're not being used. We're not maintaining... And the other part of that is, it's very powerful, is to partner with community groups that are out there that will continue to serve not only our students, but serve our parents and our community.
So my next question is, how do you explain to us that there has been no data that's been provided to the board on issues that we've asked for? Birth rates, the current real estate conditions that are surrounding the school site, the vacant school site, expected mobility due to either closures of certain businesses elsewhere in Sac City, boundaries, you know, other numerous things that this board has asked for. How do you explain that to us right now?
I believe parts and pieces of those have been delivered in various formats. Do I have a nice package to put forth to you tonight? No, I don't. Some of those things are beyond my staff's ability and my ability to calculate. We would end up seeking outside help to answer some of those questions. If the board deems them relevant before a decision is made, then we would certainly look towards doing that.
I think this board has expressed on numerous occasions that those were very important issues, and I don't appreciate sometimes being given this loop of feedback when we've asked for it several times, several members, not just myself, but several members. So I think some accountability here is long overdue. You know, and I say this because there's no way that you can be in the same place that I can be at any given point in time. You know, a couple of weeks ago, I'm across the street from Maple Elementary, and I just happened, just call it being at the right place at the right time. I just happened to be there while some administration members and community members that belong to the St. Patrick's Academy were all standing around and having a discussion. They were so excited that they had the potential of growing their school because of the new businesses that were going to come in to Campbell's Soup Factory. And I sat, I stood there in awe, going, wow. Here we have a school facility vacant across the street, and all we can think about is leasing it out instead of being truly innovative and saying, we have an IB program at Luther Burbank High School, and it's struggling to grow. And over in the east side of Sacramento, we have an early-years IB program all the way. We're growing that extension all the way to the 12th grade. Now, to me, that's an issue of equality, but it's also an issue of a lack of innovative thought and a lack of how do we capture students to come back to Sac City Unified School District? Again, I'm a board member for Sac City Unified School District. I'm looking at our bottom line, and I'm looking at the potential loss when you have people right across the street, you have a school right across the street that, by the way, gives full scholarships to students so they don't have to pay. So in essence, we're losing money. We're losing that ADA to those students and those families that live right there just because we're lacking the vision of innovation. I just want to bring that to your attention about some of those conversations, and I happened to be at the right place at the right time. And again, just a couple of days ago, Monday, to be precise, I'm sitting at a restaurant, and the server, out of the blue, just starts talking about how the new arena is coming up and how they're going to gentrify the community downtown, and that they're expecting that a lot of these community members are going to move out to the south side of Sacramento. Again, I go, wow, they're moving to the south side of Sacramento, where's the affordability? The affordability is in that Maple area. The affordability is in the area that I live and represent in. And we stand to capture students. We stand to capture ADA. And I think that some innovative thought needs to be taking place and precedence to protect the interests of the district. Again, I say that I really appreciate and I really value all of the community partners and the nonprofits that came forward and the school, the private school that came forward. I really value and appreciate that they came forward and that they have an interest in our community because I do believe that schools are the centers of our community. And with that said, I myself was part of this group that went and did a community survey around the Mark Hopkins area, once they decided to blend Mark Hopkins with the Rosa Parks. I'd like to see, if we're going to move forward on this proposal stuff, I'd like to see La Familia not considered for Maple, but rather considered for Maple, I mean, for Mark Hopkins facility. Because that proposal actually contains everything that the Mark Hopkins community wants. I think it would be beneficial to the La Familia Center to actually expand out that direction because it's not so close, and you're capturing a larger audience and a larger group of people. So I think that that would be a better proposal, and it would be a better trade-off, and it would help grow the entity even that much greater because they're already serving that similar makeup of the community in that Maple area by being where they're at right now. But if they expand it out to Mark Hopkins, they could stand to grow double the amount. So I think, again, we have to think innovatively, we have to think creatively, and we have to think about our bottom line and what we can capture here.
Thank you, Member Rodriguez. Member Ryan?
Thank you, President Wu. I guess I would begin by saying that I respectfully disagree with Member Rodriguez on this. You know, in particular, when I, when I'm looking at these proposals, absolutely ensuring the fiscal health of the district is in my mind, but the first question is, what is in the best interest to me, not of the district, but of the community? And what I will tell you is that when I was running, I walked and knocked thousands of doors and spoke with hundreds of community members. And consistently, and I want to speak to two individual proposals, I heard, you know, incredible angst and sadness over the closure of Fruit Ridge Elementary in particular and Maple, but I also heard this real desire to see a path forward. And the desire was to have a community center that would truly meet the needs of a community that has pockets of poverty that are frankly astonishing. I will tell you, walking around the Fruit Ridge site, I saw people dumping trash, I saw a lack of green space, I saw a sadness and loss of hope that for me was unconscionable. And as I talked to community members, constituents said to me, we want to know that you are going to put the services in there that will meet the needs of our community from youth What I also heard was this desire for a very humble request that we would have a center that mirrored the Sierra Center in Curtis Park. Now, as you know, that is a more affluent community, and I think it's interesting to note that in affluent communities, the availability of after-school activities for our families is not much of, you know, a pause for thought because resources can obtain that. The availability of special services for seniors, et cetera, are much more accessible. In Fruit Ridge and the surrounding area, we have families who are looking to have their needs met, and we have people who are stepping up to the plate. I want to speak, I want to speak specifically to La Familia, and I'll go back to Fruit Ridge. I think La Familia, for me, of all the applicants, has a track record of success spanning more than 40 years. What to me is very exciting about La Familia is recognizing a large population of Latinos that often feel disenfranchised, marginalized, and separated from the revitalization going on in other parts of Oak Park. La Familia has stepped up to meet those needs. I want to recognize that La Familia has an incredible breadth of community partners that to me are pretty remarkable, and community partners that are willing to put their name on their line and resources. And when it comes to the fiscal viability, I think that they have a financial plan that really more than meets all of the requirements of the district, exceeds it. If you look at where La Familia was even two years ago, they have grown significantly, and I think their prospect for continuing to attract resources, to ensure services to meet the needs of our community members is strong. So I would just want to point that out. I do want to ask of Supervisor Serna, he mentioned bringing resources to the table to help see into fruition these projects, and I would be interested what those are. I also would like to talk about, you know, the item that Rachel Rios brought up about compromising the project if we fail to move forward. Once again, I think, you know, it's important to note that what we have before us is really a motion to enter negotiations, which I don't take lightly, and I hope, Ms. Allen, that you would work very closely with the board in helping to frame the parameters per Member Rodriguez's request to ensure that we are truly doing this with the best intentions and integrity. And then finally, I do want to mention, you know, I will be recusing myself from the vote on Camelia Waldorf. I am a parent of a toddler who is attending their program and shows that school because it is the most diverse and has offered incredible support to me and my three-year-old son. So thank you.
Thank you, Member Ryan. Member Arroyo.
Thank you, President Wu. I would like to say a couple of comments before I get into a couple of questions here. And I heard a few members of the community talk about how difficult the school closures were, and indeed, they were. And just by way of background, I just want to say that today's not the place to reargue that issue. And I say that with full consciousness that I was extremely opposed to the closures. And anyone that remembers or that was part of the dialogue when I was here, you know, when that happened, remembers me arguing very ardently against them. But I have to acknowledge that they're closed, and the question before me as I see it is, what do we do now? How do we best move forward? How do we best meet the need of the children primarily and the students that we have in the community? And when the idea came across to repurpose the facilities, the very first idea was like, yes, we need money, and let's figure out a best approach to make the best financial gain out of the facility. And as I researched and did more thinking about what the idea of repurposing these facilities were, I broadened my perspective, and I figured, in conversations with other members in the community, two very important points. These facilities were not, they were given, they're part of the government, we are part of a governmental entity, and we are not here necessarily to make money. We have a responsibility to be financially. And I would appreciate if, like, you just, you can raise your hands to clap. I think that, I get your enthusiasm, and I know when you're going to clap and when you're not, but I think, but I think that the point here is just to be respectful of, you know, everyone, not only in the dais, but also in the community. And so I don't see now the fact that we need to use this facility. If we can make revenue, great, but I think that the number-one priority for the school district is to meet need. And need can be defined in many different ways. And when I look at some of these proposals, I have to look at what would a proposal such as the one that has been considered for Fruit Ridge bring to the community in terms of services to students, families? And when we have better-prepared students coming into our classrooms on a regular basis that are not missing class, that are ready to learn, that are enthusiastic about coming to school, I mean, some of the benefits of some of the programs that we can consider for each facility extend beyond dollars and cents. And maybe we had several PhD doctorate candidates that were doing research day in and day out about quantifying how some of those services can benefit the district financially. I think that we can come to a number, but I think that the question before us is a little broader. It's about what do we do with each facility, given where we're at today, given the proposals that we have before us? And I concur with Board Member Rodriguez in that we have to be innovative, that we have to consider every proposal possible. The challenge is, is that how many proposals do we have coming forward? And I would like to consider a $10 million investment in the district that changes every facility and that has a tremendous amount of output academically and financially out of each facility, but the question is, realistically, what are the proposals being put forward? And can we, do we have the bandwidth to internally do the proposals for everyone and create and generate? I think that to a large degree, we have to depend on the partners that we live with on our regular neighborhoods, day in and day out, and for years to come. And the reality is, we have great proposals being put on the table. I do have some questions about each and every single one of the proposals as far as their viability, what it means into the future. For example, of La Familia, I would like to know, once the proposal, if it gets approved, what other services could hopefully come online, or is there room for other services to be provided at that facility? Things of that nature, and I think that it's not about criticizing any given one proposal, but to look at it at face value and figure out how do we make it better. So having said that, I mean, I don't want to make, I don't want us to look for perfect because perfect may never come, if that's our bar, our standard. In the meantime, we have a lot of children with a lot of need. We have a lot of need with health, mental health, services, counseling. The gamut of services that the partners that just can be for us are willing to provide to the community, and I just want the rest of the board to consider that the benefit to the district, to the community, to the children extend beyond dollars and cents, and that benefits can be quantified in many, many different ways. And with that, I will just like to conclude my remarks and ask if there are specific questions, if the proponents for every single project is here, in case we kind of get a little bit of answer. And I know that some of them are here, but I don't know if all four.
Not sure if anyone from the Performing Arts is...
Because I did have a specific question from the proposal that was submitted for Washington Elementary, and I don't know if they're here.
I don't believe they're here.
I don't believe they're here. I can take your question and ask them to respond?
Yes. Yes. Because as now I delve into the, how do we meet the different needs in different communities? As I look at downtown, and I think this is something that I've mentioned with Board Member Hanson, and, you know, we're in agreement, and other board members as well, as we look at the demographic trends of downtown and the population growth and the number of schools in the downtown area, I mean, there are not that many. And so, we really have to do anything and everything to really put a school, an educational facility, there. And I know that the proposal submitted for Washington Elementary is asking primarily for weekends, for evenings, but I just want to make sure how they would intersect should a full academic program be presented there. And I want to make sure that they are not an obstacle to a specific school being proposed to that. And so, I would like to move them forward to the next level, but I'm not ready if I don't know with certainty that we can achieve everything. And then regarding CP Huntington and Camelia Waldorf, one of the most difficult ramifications of the school closures is that there was a massive displacement of families and students out of their neighborhood to other schools. I think that we can comfort ourselves in the fact that people are resilient, children are resilient, and I think that despite the pain of having those school closures, they have accommodated their lives to now go elsewhere. But ultimately, as a steward of a public entity, I have to figure out how do we make the best of our resources? And I want to know how the Camelia Waldorf plan, what would it mean to the children in the local neighborhood, right? Because what we're doing, in essence, and this is not a criticism of the program, that may be great, but basically, what we're saying is, to the community right around CP Huntington, we're going to shut down your school, and we're going to give it to kids that are going to come from elsewhere, yet your kids have to go somewhere else because either they can't afford the tuition, it's a private school. This is the balancing act that, as a board member, I have to figure out how to make the best, right? I mean, we're shutting down the school, and now we're going to provide resources to a community from elsewhere, yet we have a high... A community with high need, and I just need to learn a little bit more about what the benefit to the local neighborhood it is. And I heard the president of the Neighborhood Association expressing their strong support, and I get it. Who wants to close school right next to the neighborhood? So that's a benefit. But in terms of the children and the local families, if they want to go there, if they don't have the money, then they don't get to go. So those are some of the questions that I want to make sure that we address. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Arroyo. Second Vice President Hanson.
Thank you very much. First, I just want to say that I'm very glad we moved forward with this process. I know it was a difficult process, and it's something that we spent a year and a half, at least, even getting to this point. And the reason I am particularly happy is the amazing collaborative efforts that I've heard tonight, and knowing that we can't be all things as a school board or a district, but when we allow people to come forward and give us some proposals, some really exciting things happen. So those are things that we could not have done without ourselves. So that, to me, is exciting. I'm also glad to hear about the partnerships that were offered by some of our local elected officials, the city and county government. I think that's very much appreciated, and I think some of these efforts would certainly benefit by being able to partner with them to make your programs stronger. I'm particularly a big fan of 916, 916, Inc. They've done some amazing programs, and very excited to see them in there. I know that this is the first, I guess really the second step of a still a process, that there's work to be done with contract negotiations. To me, I want to... I'd like to focus on impact on existing programs that may be at some of these schools. Can you tell me if we have... I know, for instance, at Washington School, we have a daycare program that is housed there. Do we have existing programs at any of the other three schools that are, you know, currently in use, that are currently our programs?
Look, we have childcare at CP Huntington as well. Nothing's going on at Maple. Nothing's... Well, the garden is continuing at Fruit Ridge, the community garden, and then the other sites weren't requested, so...
Do you know how this would impact the program at CP Huntington?
I'm sorry?
Suppose if we moved forward with the program at CP Huntington, that would obviously be impacted by this proposal, if we move forward with that?
I think that's part of the negotiations. I'm not going to speak for Mr. Rucker, but, you know, I wouldn't want to displace one of our programs unless there was something better for us, but that involves more than just me.
Well, I would say that for those who are listening and may go into contract negotiations with us, because obviously those contracts will come back to us for a ratification before they are finalized, that working collaboratively with existing programs that are serving the community would be something that'd be really important for me. Also was happy to hear that Israeli Family Urban Farms was looking forward to being part of the collaborative. I think that's something that'd be very positive, especially considering the garden at Fruit Ridge. I know that's something that's a source of pride and something that folks missed. And I know it's not an easy process for all of us here on the board on this particular issue. There are some who, you know, are choosing to be in lots of different directions. I, for one, though, think that there's good reason to move forward to the next step and to allow the contracts to move forward. Certainly want to have all due diligence to see what kind of financial resources are there and make sure that we're intent on being attentive landlords and that folks are using the buildings appropriately and that there's a level of accountability there to us because we're accountable to the taxpayers to make sure they're being used properly. In particular, I want to talk about the potential use of the Washington site. It's absolutely my intent that that school be reopened as a full elementary school. I think the changing economy downtown will give us that ability to do that. We might not be able to do it in the 2015, 2016 school year, but I think absolutely by the 2016, '17 year that it will be viable for us to do that, and I think there's a lot of opportunities there. So I would ask that if we decide to move forward, looking at the contracting with the Sacramento Performing Arts, that they're aware that it could very well be a short-term lease, and maybe we consider on that particular project a year-to-year lease where they have to come back. And we talk about where we're at with using that school. Could be a way for us to make sure that, because some folks are using, and that doesn't become a permanent use of the school. And I'm attentive to what Board Member Rodriguez said. You know, we want to be able to take advantage of these facilities should the time come that they need to be reopened as Sac City schools. So building that into the process, I think, is something that's important. That being said, though, I'm very excited about the proposals that were presented tonight. I think it's some of the best of Sacramento. When we have folks that get together and work collaboratively and come up with some ideas to serve your community, you can do some really amazing things. So very proud of the efforts and the work that people put into that. Thank you.
Thank you, Second Vice President Hanson. Member Cochran.
I'd like to compliment all the applications for their strength and depth, and I'm very excited, particularly for the Fruit Ridge and the Maple School. I think that the programs there are going to be a great asset to the community. I serve an area that is Area 2, and we have several schools that are not closed and are not on this list, but their programs are heavily impacted because of the closure, particularly of Washington School. And while I am a full proponent of the performing arts, I have serious concerns about the school being rented out to another entity, because I do share, Member Rodriguez's concern, that once a program goes into a building, it's very hard to thread it out or ask it to move somewhere else when it's established, basically its heart and soul in the building. So I have a question for you, Ms. Allen. Washington School was on the closure list, and now it's on this list for potential contracts and applications to bring a program in. Is it possible just to take it off the application process, particularly if the program for the performing arts is not voted for tonight?
I believe that would certainly be in the board's... Yeah. You know, the recommendation from the 7-Eleven Committee is just a recommendation, so you could have done something completely different with any of the seven sites. Yeah, I would say yes.
And I'd just like to comment that it's a very specific reason that I'm asking this. There are programs, for example, in Theodore Judah, like Project Green, their music program, heavily impacted because Washington School was closed, and the students who needed a school went into other schools in Area 2. There are several projects that are going in that are housing projects in the area, McKinley Village, potentially to bring 100 more students, and Sutter Home, which is also going back into the neighborhood of the east side of Sacramento. It's not to mention all of the building, like Member Hanson has mentioned, the Midtown Development. A home school for people who have their homes in Midtown and East Sacramento is something that's desperately needed. So I... While I very much support the performing arts, I am going to make a vote based on Area 2 needs and the needs of students that need to go to a Sacramento City school that is high-performing and that's in their neighborhood. And I'd also like to explore the possibility, and, you know, you can provide guidance of how to remove Washington School from this application process and move it towards reopening. Thank you.
Vice President Pritchett.
Thank you, President Wu. I just wanted to reiterate the remarks that Member Arroyo and Second Vice President Hanson had made about the Washington site. And right in the proposal, it shows that they would be operating Saturdays and Sundays. They would follow the SCUSD instructional calendar and would not require exclusive rooms of common space. So I'm not sure if that would actually hurt. I'm fully in support of reopening Washington. It's been something that I've been working on as well. I don't think that this proposal would actually hurt. In fact, I think it would probably be very beneficial to us in the long run. Second, I have a question in regard to the Camelia Waldorf. And I just want to say that, you know, I fully support the Waldorf-style schools. I have two in my area, and they are fantastic. But I do have some great concern, and this is why. It says in here that the families that will be going to the school do not live, or most of them do not live, in that area. I don't know if that's true or if that really stands true. So if this passes through tonight, I would really want to scrutinize who's enrolled there, where are these children coming from, who's paying? Are they getting scholarships? I know it says it's tuition-based, but are they offering scholarships? Because I could tell you that I... I'm sure that there's going to be families that are going to be moving in to that area, as Member Rodriguez had stated. And I'd like to know who's going to be in that area and where these kids are going to be coming from. So if you could please look into that for me, that would be fantastic if this passes through.
Will do.
Member Rodriguez.
Thank you again for the opportunity to address some of these... Or actually, I'd like to hear some answers tonight. So I know that Mr. Rucker is here, and I know that he's had stood ready earlier to answer some of these questions. You know, I did see one of the points that the Raiders made was, it was unclear whether what benefit Sac City and if I would have from having a partnership with Camelia Waldorf. I had the fortunate opportunity to sit down and have coffee with Mr. Rucker, and I asked him that same question. What benefit will we have by having a partnership with Camelia? I'd like to give him an opportunity to address that here before the board and then all the other questions that came up as well. Thank you.
Okay, let me see if I can address each one. I'm also going to ask our school administrator, Artith, to come up and speak with us, or me. Let's see. So Member Hanson asked about the early childhood program at that site. So we would fully support the early childhood program to stay. In fact, as we understood, that was never part of the proposal, that that program still is there, they're on a different site. I mean, they're on physically the same... They're adjacent, but they have their own site. So we, you know, welcome them to be there. Let's see. Then, Member Rodriguez and Member Arroyo, I think you had similar questions. Yeah, why don't you go ahead?
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. My name is Artith Sikola, and I am the administrator at Camelia Waldorf. Thank you for your question. It's something that I can easily answer and with great pride. Since the founding of Camelia Waldorf, we have always reached out and taken exceptional pride in having a diverse student body, and that means really making this educational opportunity available to any family and any child, that we are able to serve their needs. We have a strong track record of providing significant financial aid, and that is part of, as you spoke, that is part of what makes our community such a diverse community, and we really see that as a very valuable part of the education that our children receive. And it is something that has been taken into consideration as we prepare for the potential opportunity to work with you, that we, of course, would not want to create a school in a community that would be exclusive and would not allow the opportunity for those families to send their children to our school. We have already started working actively with the Neighborhood Association and building relationships, simply as part of researching this opportunity, and it is something that, again, we would take great pride in continuing to work with that, having potentially neighborhood projects, having them come and participate. We have a very active calendar of different festivals and celebrations. Community is a very strong part of what we offer at Camelia Waldorf, and I can't imagine our school being in that neighborhood and not being a part of the community. So I would think that that would only benefit the school. You had also asked, Mrs. Pritchett, as far as where the children come from and who we are. We do have many children that come from the area. One of the things that makes the location desirable is that it remains geographically convenient and accessible to many of our families. We also have children who do come from great distances in order to reach that Waldorf education, because they do place tremendous value in the things that make a Waldorf experience unique.
Can I ask you to explain? I know that the Waldorf program that you run is different... It differs from the Waldorf program we run. How do you support our Waldorf programs? And then can you describe the differences?
Yes, thank you for asking. So we actually have a very nice relationship with Alice Burney, and we often have families that move back and forth, and we work very well with that school. And I think the opportunity to have two Waldorf programs in the neighborhood supports all the different aspects of that. Our program is different in that our program is a more... A pure Waldorf program in that all of our teachers do receive Waldorf training, and that we have... There are certain subject areas that, because we are not a Waldorf-inspired but a Waldorf program, that there's greater time dedicated to those programs. And we also have a slightly different approach, because we are a private school, concerning the homework and the testing in some of those areas.
So in essence, I just... I kind of want to think about Waldorf. It is private school. A private school parent, myself. I know that not all private schools are the same. They are also not for every family. And not... That doesn't mean that every single community member that lives in the Brentwood area would find itself attractive to that particular, especially this particular... would find itself attractive to that particular, especially this particular Waldorf program, as opposed to one of our Waldorf-inspired programs.
Right.
It is a lifestyle.
It is.
It is not a, you know, come to school and do your thing and then go home and you can be somebody different.
That's right.
It's... From what I understand, it is a lifestyle. The other thing that I think I want to ask is, you guys are K... Or pre-K to eight?
We actually begin with a parent-toddler program, and then we have our preschool through eighth-grade program.
And then where do the children go after eighth grade?
After eighth grade, they go many different places. Some of them will continue with a Waldorf program, either at Carver or at Sacramento Waldorf. And then many of them do go on into the public schools in their neighborhood.
So we're capturing students on the out set of that.
Yeah, I think that's fair to say. I mean, again, on the one hand, while we have local students in the area that do come to our school, we reach out to San Juan, Elk Grove, many other school districts that come specifically to our school for that reason. And I think if you go talk with some of the administrators at a Carver or a McClatchy or a West Campus or some of these other schools, you'll find that we go directly into those schools. So... And it's not... Again, we're pulling a lot of our families from out of district. They're coming into the Waldorf program and then staying with the district at some of the local high schools.
And I would also like to invite each of you. I think the best way to come and to learn about any organization, especially a school, is to come and to spend time on our campus. If you have a half hour, if you have an hour, whatever time you do have, I would really welcome you to come and to spend some time and to see what is unique about our community and to learn more about us and to continue these conversations about whatever concerns you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have some additional clarifications that I forgot to ask the first time around. With Fruit Ridge? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Who's here for Fruit Ridge? The representative?
Sorry, stepped outside for a second.
Oh, that's okay. It's hard to be in here, trust me.
Yeah, I bet.
I appreciate that you have been very diligent about looking for fiscal agents and fiscal support, because that was my major concern in reviewing your proposal.
Sure.
I do want to say that yours was the only proposal that had an implementation plan, albeit the dates were off.
Well, the dates were off, right.
I understand why, but I really appreciated that part. And you know, I mean, for what it is, I appreciated that there was a draft proposal of a contract in there as well. I want to tell you how much... The things I appreciated about your proposal.
Thank you.
What was problematic about your proposal for me is that it was vague, and it didn't really go into a certain amount of depth for me to find out.
Oh, my gosh. And I'm thinking, what? I don't know how deep I could get, but go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, and I'll give you a very specific example. Is this young man who came up here from Green Tech, I think it was?
Oh, okay, Simeon Gant.
Yes. He came in, he said that they were planning to have some installation trainings on how to install solar systems.
Right. Not at the school.
Okay. So I was a little misled on that part, because when I looked at the proposal, it said one thing, and then when he came forward, he said a different thing. So I'm like, what's going on?
Oh, yeah, I think what they're doing, they've just had... Because they were actually voted the number-one green, emerging kind of green education tech program, and they are going to be doing a lot of that type of stuff. But no, we are very, very aware of the parameters of the school. So no, we're not... We would never come in and start doing anything like that. We are really, really aware of all that. So no, definitely not. They will be doing training, and they will be going out into the community. And they've got... There's an area there that they'll be using kind of as a workshop and a learning place. But no, we would never be doing anything to your facility at all. I love that school, and I think I've tried to be as clear as I could. I worked... I don't know, I think it started with 87 pages, and I got it down to that. So I mean, it was really well thought out and bringing the organizations together that we really wanted to reach out to the organizations that were really going to meet a very diverse neighborhood and really bring in organizations that were, you know, going to meet all of those needs. And we've still had people calling and, you know, kind of wanting to get in. Actually, at this point, depending upon what the school... I know initially, the school had wanted some room for storage, so we've got a couple of places, you know... I mean, we've got space in there in case that's, you know, still the case. We don't know until we get to, you know, down to more of the nitty-gritty stuff. But yeah, as far as that, no. We would never go ahead and start making changes in there. That was very clearly spelled out by Kathy Allen. She's done a great job, I've got to tell you. She's been so patient, and I appreciate all of you guys. And I appreciate all the... You know, I appreciate, you know, where you're coming from, and I thank you, and you guys have done an amazing job. And it's been a very long, grueling process for everyone, I think. So if I can answer any other questions, throw them at me.
Anyone else?
Anybody else? Okay, all right. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay.
And lastly, I want to bring up Ms. Rios.
My partner's here.
Thank you. I'm glad the three of you came forward. I just want to make it clear, I'm not against your proposal. I really appreciate everything that you guys do with our community. I really do feel that you could expand and be so much more of a greater benefit to the wider community by being located elsewhere. So with that said, I'd like for you to deeply consider the possibility of going over to Mark Hopkins. It's my community. I'm welcoming you to my community that I represent, so that should be a good thing. So people shouldn't hate me out there. I'm not against you. I'm welcoming you to my community, because we have a deep need for it. And if you think about Mark Hopkins' facility, right next to it is a K-to-eight school, which has a natural child base right there. It's already in existence. And there's only a fence that divides it. They can walk right over. And you're serving the equal community that you're serving over here, except over here, you've got a facility that you can build upon and expand upon, and you can be great in the community there, and you can also be great in the community in the further south side of Sacramento. So I'm just proposing that to you. Take it into deep consideration, and I want to clarify that I really appreciate the organizations that you guys, that you three represent, and Mr. Hernandez. I really appreciate it. I just think... I think big, and I think what's beneficial for everyone at a greater scale, okay?
Thank you, and we appreciate that. We do want to share that La Familia serves all of Sacramento County. We don't just serve that community. Our programs are county-wide. We go all the way to Galt and Walnut Grove. Our mental health programs go up north. We serve everyone all over the community. Some of our programs, our Birth and Beyond program, we are one of nine family resource centers, and we have zip codes. And that way, each family resource center will serve different populations, and so that there is a family resource center in that community that provides those services. I will say that we were very fortunate that in January, the county extended our funding. Before, it was just first five, so we were serving only children zero to five or under five, under six, I should say. However, we just received funding to serve the six-to-12 population, which is your population, your school population. And so our programs are going to be expanding to do after-school programs and programs that work with them, as well as domestic violence programs and having them on-site. And so because of those, we need the additional space. Franklin Community has been neglected for so many years, and it does not have a park. It does not have a play area like Fairy Tale Town. It does not have those things. And so we are committed to, you know, working with the community and the business district there, but we also recognize the need for services elsewhere. We're very strategic about how we make that growth, because we want to make sure that we're going to be sustainable, and so we take those steps slowly. But I have a meeting, as a matter of fact, tomorrow with New City Council Member Carr to talk about the services, because he has asked for our help in that 30% of his population is Latino. And so we are working with them. I think, as our Dojo said, he does two days at our facility and two days at the San Penel Center. So we work very closely with all of the programs in the area, you know, working together, as well as in the north area, not just in the south area. So we really do appreciate that, and it is something that I think we want to consider as well. So we appreciate that in the future. In the future, that we would like to consider that. So thank you for that offer, welcoming us into your home.
Yeah. Just please, please note that there was a community survey that was done and that transportation was one of the key reasons why they didn't go over to other community centers. And if you're not familiar with Mark Hopkins' school site, please take a drive over there. I think you will find that that facility has got so much potential. I mean, the location of it, everything, far greater potential. And I think the other last thought I want to leave you with is that I see... I see the future. I'm very futuristic by educational training. I do look at trends, and I do see that I have to caution the board that when there is a move of businesses happening, families are coming. And I think that we would be remiss if we lost the opportunity to come and look at that Maple School site as a potential reopen with an innovative program. And I say it because the children who were at Maple before we closed that school increased by 100 API points right the year that we closed. So there is such a great potential for them to be extraordinary scholars. And if we put that early-years IB program there, they could be that much more in the future, and we could create a good system of scholars for that entire area, which would then increase the level of that community at the same time, in partnership with your business on the other side over there, which has already been established. So... And that's my final point that I'm going to make.
Thank you. We do also appreciate the scores of those students. We looked at that. That was one of the things that we talked about in terms of not closing the schools, because we saw the potential in the youth, and we were very involved with that school. They hosted our annual Health and Safety Fair. We also looked at the potential of demographics to see whether or not there was a potential that there would be more school-aged children there. We talked with the Franklin Business District in terms of whether there were plans for apartments or multi-housing units that would be coming in, so that there would be more children that would be able to fill that school. And everything we got was that there was not going to be a significant impact. And also in talking with the district, you know, we were very careful to not go in there if there was going to be a potential that that might be opened. What we talked about is, in 10 years, if that were to happen, 10, 15 years, we would hope that the district would look at future facilities, that those children would be... That we would look at having learning environments that were new, that we would look at building creative learning environments and maybe move away from some of the facilities that we have that are not serving the needs of the children. But for the short term, what we were told is that there isn't a need for those students right now. So that's why we moved forward with that proposal.
Thank you. Member Arroyo.
I mean, it's more of a comment, and maybe, unless you want to chime in after I say this. I do want to move forward with your proposal. It gives me something to think about, what Member Rodriguez just mentioned. If we move forward to the next phase, it's only the negotiations. And I think that it does leave the door open for future dialogue, at least just for exploration purposes. I think that the district and the board will eventually make its mind on something. But I think that even if we move forward with your proposal today, which I think it has enough support, I would only encourage you to at least have the dialogue.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, I see no more buttons. My turn. I want to thank everybody for... I want to thank everybody for all their participation. I want to thank everybody for coming out this evening. I really want to thank staff, and I want to thank the 7-11 Committee for all their hard work, because they're not represented here today, but... It was due to the efforts of the 7-11 Committee that got us started and here today. So I'm really excited about putting people and children and our community back into our schools, or the possibility of it. But I really also want to caution that while this is a great opportunity, we are not moving it... Turning over our spaces in perpetuity. There was a reason why we did not surplus them. We think and we hope that as we continue to build and strengthen our community, there may again become a need for those facilities. So while there... We are... Might be entertaining long-term goals, they are not... I really want to caution that they're not to be used in... How should I say this? You can get to live there, but you can't live there forever. So just remember that as we move forward. So we have before us... We have before us next steps, and the thing on my board's really shrunk, so let me... Flip the page here. We have before us... So staff is seeking direction from the board to begin the negotiations with and repurpose and reuse applicants. And so as we have four before us, let me ask my colleagues, would they like to take each individually, or they would like to take them en masse?
On one, you have, Mr. President, a potential abstention, and that is Camellia Waldorf by Board Member Ryan. So you may want to split those two votes.
Thank you for reminding me of that. Second Vice President Hanson.
I'd be comfortable with moving them as a package.
Except that we now have... We have to recognize the abstention.
Giving Member Ryan the ability to abstain on the Camellia vote.
That's a little hard to do. You can do three, and then separately, Camellia Waldorf. That's just my recommendation.
Okay. Member Cochran.
I would like them separated. Thank you.
Okay. Member Arroyo.
Yes. I was just about to echo that we should have each one. I mean, it's not going to take more than a few minutes to go through each one of them.
All right. I can sense that the consensus is moving towards individualizing them. So I'm going to take them one at a time as a...
And sorry, President Wu, but on this motion for the approval, I think that there were some concerns about, given the fact that the proponents for Washington just... I don't know if it needs to be part of the motion or just direction to ensure that the dialogue occurs to... For clarification, that the primary intent and priority of the board is to have a full functioning school at Washington Elementary, and they need to realize that. And whatever agreement occurs or whatever negotiation happens, they need to be mindful of that.
Before I call on Member Cochran and then Second Vice President Hanson, I believe Superintendent would like to make a comment.
Yeah, I just, you know, I really want to piggyback on what Board Member Arroyo said, is that while I'm a big fan of the performing arts, I just really want to caution us about going into any long-term agreement over Washington. I think there's a lot of potential there. I know staff and I have been really looking at that very closely in terms of repurposing it and opening it back up. We don't know what form, but I just would not want to get into a long-term agreement there where we have to then lose the possibility of repurposing one of our elementary schools.
Member Cochran.
President Wu, I respectfully request that...
President Wu, I respectfully request that each of these votes be a roll call vote.
Okay. Second Vice President Hanson.
I was also going to mention the ability that as the contract negotiations proceed, that the possibility that the Ad Hoc Facilities Committee can serve as a sounding board for negotiations as they go through the process and the ability also for individual board members to work with you for the schools that are in their areas. I confirmed with legal counsel that that's allowable and I think that would help alleviate, you know, our concern that, you know, the things that we care about, you know, just to make sure they're being addressed. You know, for instance, I know we've, every one of us has said it now about Washington Elementary Schools, so there's no misunderstanding on the part of a potential partner there.
Member Rodriguez.
Sort of along the lines with what Vice President Hanson was saying, but it would make me feel a lot more comfortable about moving in any direction forward if Superintendent and President Wu, if you will allow for the board to have some type of opportunity for a discussion regarding parameters of negotiations prior to Ms. Allen meeting with any of the proposal makers.
I would encourage any of my colleagues who have contributions regarding parameters that they would like to share with Ms. Allen, I would encourage that you go ahead and do that. I don't know that we would have to formalize a process and I think it would be, we run into, I'd hate to run into Brown Act violations and I see from counsel that we need not formalize it, but please share your comments with Ms. Allen.
If I can question, I have a question with Mr. Barron's. Wouldn't that be covered under the closed-session meetings in terms of negotiation for real estate?
You can always meet in closed session regarding negotiations and indicate, since these may be individual cases, you could set parameters on that as to the scope of negotiations, giving direction to the superintendent and staff. Yes, you can do that as a board. End closed session.
And I expressed earlier in my comments, my first time around was my concerns around the financial aspect and the impact to the district. And if I were to talk to you, Ms. Allen, I really want to have a thorough follow-up and with my discussion with you to however means we can get it out according to Mr. Barron's because I'm not going to state how it needs to go out. And also, I want some, some follow-up about how you implemented that as well, so that I know that those parameters were followed.
Moving forward, Tal Holistics and Partners. Do I have a motion on Tal Holistics and Partners? Vice President Pritchett moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Second Vice President Hanson. Mr. Secretary, will you call a roll?
Member O'Royo.
Aye.
Member Cochran.
Aye.
Second Vice President Hanson.
Aye.
Vice President Pritchett.
Aye.
Member Rodriguez.
Aye.
Member Ryan.
Aye.
President Wu.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Okay, thank you. Moving forward then on Camellia Waldorf, Waldorf, do I have a motion?
I move for Camellia Waldorf to go forward.
Thank you, Member Rodriguez. Do I have a second? Second Vice, Second Vice President Hanson. Mr. Secretary, will you call the roll?
Member O'Royo.
No.
Member Cochran.
Aye.
Second Vice President Hanson.
No.
Vice President Pritchett.
No.
Member Rodriguez.
Aye.
Member Ryan.
She's abstaining.
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 Thank you. President Wu.
Aye.
Motion moves forward, four in favor, two against, and one abstention.
Thank you. Do I have a motion on La Familia Counseling Center? Member O'Royo moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Member Ryan. All those, uh, excuse me.
Roll call.
Mr. Superintendent, will you call the roll, please?
Member O'Royo.
Aye.
Member Cochran.
Aye.
Second Vice President Hanson.
Aye.
Vice President Pritchett.
Aye.
Member Rodriguez.
Aye.
Member Ryan.
Aye.
President Wu.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for Sacramento Performing Arts? Vice President Pritchett moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Vice President Hanson, seconds. Call the roll, please, Mr. Secretary.
Member O'Royo.
Aye.
Member Cochran.
No.
Second Vice President Hanson.
Aye.
Vice President Pritchett.
Aye.
Member Rodriguez.
Aye.
Member Ryan.
No.
President Wu.
No.
Motion passes four, three.
Thank you. I want to thank everybody for their patience this evening. We have work to do still, so if you could, if you're going to leave, if you could leave quietly so we can continue our work.
Make sure that they don't tie the school up.
Item 10.4, resolution, local reserves cap.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think I'll take a five-minute recess.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
Item 10.4, discussion, a conference for discussion only on a potential resolution regarding local reserves caps. Last December, Second Vice President Hanson and I attended the California School Board Association Annual Education Conference. And at that conference, it was brought to all the school board members' attention, delegates' attention, that there is language in Proposition 2 that was passed last year. Part of the cap, there is a cap, a calling for a cap on the amount of our reserves. So the background is this. In the cap, there is a cap provision that was part of an education budget trailer bill that Governor Brown signed June 20, 2014. Trailer bill provision SB 858 is now contained in ed code. Cap on the level of reserves that districts may maintain is a statutory requirement that becomes operative when the voters pass Prop 2 and when certain conditions related to state revenues and expenditures are met and the state makes a deposit of any amount into the state-level Prop 98 reserve that's created pursuant to Prop 2. California Proposition 2, the Rainy Day Budget Stabilization Fund, was approved by voters on November 4, 2014. What happened because of that trailer bill is that there now, if certain triggers are met, will be a limitation on how much the districts, school districts may have in reserves. So there's a cap on the reserves. Governor Brown publicly has recently said that he will entertain amending that. The school districts throughout the state, states, the state of California have been asked to sign a resolution in support of removal of that cap. So in your package is a draft language that we have obtained from, recommended from California School Board Association. And after discussion today, if the board approves it, then we will move forward and finalize it with language that is tailored for Sac City Unified School Board and then forward that on to the California School Board Association to present to the governor. And any comments or questions? Member Rodriguez.
Yeah. President Wu, is there anybody in, on, that you've been speaking with on staff that could review the trailer language specifically that applies to this with me so that I can speak more in-depth about this and what it really makes?
Mr. Castillo, Castillo couldn't help you on that.
Okay. No, I just would like to just have a sidebar and I just wanted to clarify who it was that you were speaking with. So we'll talk. Thanks.
Okay. Any other discussion? Then at our next board meeting, we'll move forward with this for adoption. I thank everybody for their patience. Going back to, we're now on Item 11, Business and Financial Information Reports, Enrollment and Attendance Report for Month 4, ending December 19, received. And before I get to future board meetings and locations, and the location is here, Member Rodriguez asked me to announce that this Saturday, February 7, 2015, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., we'll be at the Council General of Mexico in Sacramento, Steps to College, 2015. And I participated in this in the past, and this is the fourth annual Steps to College, and I would like everybody to know about that. And if you have an opportunity and you're interested in college, please swing by the Council General of Mexico. Oh, that's right, and in the past they have, and this time the district is providing bus transportation to...
We are. We've been actively recruiting at our high schools to get as many students there as possible, so we're hopeful we're going to get a good turnout of our students.
Thank you. Item 12, Future Board Meetings, February 19, 2015, 4:30 closed session here, 6:30 open session. March 5, 2015, 4:30 closed session here, 6:30 open session. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion to adjourn by student member Cito. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. We are adjourned. Be safe, everybody.
Darn, it's over.